And, oh, I guess we have a 130 times certain, don't we?
Yes, we do.
All right, so we, if everyone's ready, we're gonna go to our 130 times certain. But if you did not join us here in the morning, please be sure that your phones are on silent. And, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution number 25130, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida honoring Fritz Kozar for his 100th birthday. Whereas Fritz Kozar was...
Can we bring Fritz up, yeah?
Oh, is he gonna read the resolution?
He's doing the resolution now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Whereas Fritz Kozar was born on February 8th, 1925, and enlisted in the Navy at the age of 17.
Wow.
And whereas Fritz attended boot camp in Rhode Island and served on several ships throughout his career. Mr. Kozar participated in the Normandy Invasion on June 6th, 1944, and finished his naval career as a shipfitter, third class. And whereas Fritz went on to marry and raise a family, and eventually relocated to Hudson, Pasco County, Florida, where he has continued his favorite sport of fishing. And whereas any person going down Second Isle in Leisure Beach will be drawn to its front lawn, which is completely covered with flowers and plants accented with American flags, each with its own light. As all his friends and neighbors will tell you, if you are lucky enough to catch Fritz out front, chances are you will leave with a smile and a flower. And whereas we are blessed to have such great citizens such as Fritz Kozar in Pasco County, let alone as a neighbor in Leisure Beach. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County recognizes this monumentous achievement of one of Pasco County's citizens and wishes Fritz for continued good health and happiness in the years to come. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby honors and congratulates Fritz Kozar on the celebration of his 100th birthday and extends its best wishes to him. Dead and resolved in regular session with the quorum present and voting this 25th day of February 2025.
Move approval.
Second. Wait, no, I can't second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fritz would like to sit, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, actually, let's have him in the chair, because I wanna do a picture with him.
Sure, of course.
If you would put him in a wheelchair there.
Perfect.
Oh, my gosh, how we...
You wanna just walk up here, or you wanna sit and I'll roll you?
What? Just, yeah, just have him sit there for, right now, so we can talk to him first?
Oh, sure, here, right here. Actually, Fritz, here, sorry, sir, if you wanna sit, they'll say a few words, that way you're more comfortable. They wanna speak to you.
I'm gonna come down there.
Well, Jack, you might need to be out of the microphone. Yeah, there you go.
This one more comfortable than the other one I had, yeah? Better?
All right, so Fritz, congratulations on a great day. We had a great day when we went and celebrated your 100th birthday party with all your friends. We got a few friends here, we're gonna bring them up on stages, up to the podium as well to take a picture with you. But I wanna say, just congratulations, and, you know, surviving World War II, being a veteran, and your brother, who's 97 years old, couldn't make it today, wasn't quite up to it. Frank is another great guy. These guys stay together, live together, they get along great, they work together, he's a great, they're great gardeners, one does plants like broccoli and cauliflower, and Fritz does all the flowers, but just a great camaraderie, the neighborhood loves them. We got Alan Carey, we got, oh, we got Linda here, we got Charlie and Janet here, we got even John and Michelle from Get Hooked here, just all, the neighborhood comes together with these guys, they're just like, they're like a magnet to a great community. Through the storm, we spent a little time together doing a bunch of things, but just celebrating your life, and you're coming out here today is great. Thank you for your great friends that are here, too. Do you wanna say a couple of words? We've got a mic right there.
I actually wanna thank all of you people for celebrating my birthday. It is, the first 100 is easy, the second 100 is tougher.
I love it.
I'm a very good speaker, but...
That's true.
I thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, I've been to Normandy, and I know what, I mean, I can, I saw what, some of the films, and saw the, did the beaches, and, my gosh, thank you so much for your service. I have a son-in-law that's at War College in Washington DC right now, and I just, just wanna thank you so much for your service, and, was your brother also in the service? He was younger, so maybe not.
He was, too.
He was, too?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just so honored that you're here with us today, really, you have the same birthday as my daughter, actually, and just, you look fantastic. I don't know, what's your secret? Do you have a secret?
She wants to know what your secret is. Your secret to being so youthful?
I drink the good stuff.
I love it. Well, we're so happy to have you. I don't know, Commissioners, I don't think we should keep our comments long, but do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I'm glad to see you reach 100, and I can't wait to see you hit 200, so it'd be good, so. I'm about to reach 80, so I, I hope the next 20 is easier than the first 80, so, yeah. But congratulations on, on the service that you put for us in World War II, and thank you for everything you do for the county and citizens in the county.
It sounds like you're a wonderful neighbor, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was thanking you for your service, and he can't wait for you to be 200.
And did you bring a bottle so we could all take a swallow?
You drank the good stuff.
Fritz, if the bottle of the good stuff's your secret, then hopefully I'll be where you are, not for too long, but, you know, we can't, we can't recognize 100th birthday party or birthday dinner without singing "Happy Birthday." So Fritz, you got a pile of people behind you, and we're about to sing to you, ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Fritz. Happy birthday to you.
Well, I wanna say happy birthday to you, Fritz, and thank you so much for your service. I had a grandfather who lived to be 104, and when he was 101, we asked my son, we said, "When are we gonna get grandpa? He's 101, he has everything." He said, "Dalmatians." So, so I hope you have a blessed birthday.
All right, Jack, how do you wanna do the photos?
I'm gonna go down, I'll bring the friends up, and you guys can stay right behind.
Okay, sounds good. I would be cautious, too many people around, personally.
Whatever's comfortable for you.
Yeah. Well, I want a pin like that, Jack.
Hey, I'm gonna come by your house. Did you wanna, Fritz, do you wanna sit in the chair for the picture?
You wanna sit for the picture, or you'll be okay? Do you wanna sit for the picture, or do you wanna stand?
Absolutely, please sit.
You're 100, you do whatever you want.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Oh, excellent.
It's good to see you again, happy birthday.
You weren't on the board when we had a 104-year-old woman who rides our buses come up to visit us, Day City, at the board meeting.
She rides the buses all day?
Dalmatians.
That's hilarious.
No, you're fine, I'm measuring space.
Come on, John. John, come over here, right here, bud.
Picture with your phone?
I'm a little lucky, 'cause you're sitting up.
Get you in a little bit over this.
That's everybody.
Perfect. Jack, who would have got hooked on this? I'm coming in for my group of Reuben. Yeah. Love that sandwich.
Thank you.
Do you wanna wheel him back?
I wish you could have a drink.
Yeah, wheel him back.
It's amazing to hear the stories and...
Oh, yeah, those stories you don't hear very much.
For sure.
Most soldiers don't tell the stories.
Yeah.
I've heard some in the past.
Yeah, but he seems like a great guy, too.
Thank you.
Priceless. What's, what was his last name, Fritz Kozar? Okay, yeah, that was very nice. All right, we will start today with P-30. Is that right?
P-30, we have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the February 5th, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Oh, wait, what's P-29? I'm sorry, what was P-29?
There is no P-29.
Oh, I don't know on my, oh, it's R-29, R-29, okay.
Yeah, and that's...
Okay, Terry.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item P-30 is PDE 250052, this is, this is Nick Taro's speech, those planning development on the Corps Department. Item P-30 is PDE 250052, it is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 03, from ROR Retail Office Residential to IL Industrial Light on approximately 10 acres of real property located on New York Avenue, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote, and there is a presentation of so desired.
Board members, do we have people signed up for this?
We only have a applicant rep, or, yes, is the only person signed up at this point.
Board members, do you want to see a presentation? This is going to Industrial Light on 10 acres located on New York Avenue.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Trust that verified Terry lived local, the exceptions, Ole Miss.
Yes, there is. Thank you.
Is anyone in the audience who wanna speak to me?
He said only the applicant is here, it, just making sure no one here wants to speak on P-30. No one signed up for it, but of course you can be here or online.
So no one online either?
Nope.
Move approval.
Second.
Hey, hey, is this more building?
Oh, well, you can't really, do you have a copy of the agenda? Are they back there on the table? Okay, what this is doing is taking residential office, retail office and residential to light industrial, so it's a change in zoning status.
No, it's, this is a comprehensive plan amendment.
Comprehensive plan amendment, sorry.
So, Madam Chairman, very familiar with the property, it's gonna create jobs and opportunities, so I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Roll call, roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 5, or District 3 Chairman Starkey.
Aye. P-31.
P-31, we have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the November 27th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P-31 is PDE 250062, this is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for text amendments to Chapter 2, future land use element, appendix section flu A6, the official land use map, Chapter 6, housing element, glossary, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation of so desired.
This is our ADU ordinance?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay, but this is, we will be having another discussion on this in a, in a month or two?
March.
When we go into our rules, but this is just amending the comp plan to allow for ADUs.
Madam Chairman, move approval.
You need to call for public comment.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Anyone signed up?
Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this?
No one signed up in advance, no one signed up here.
Okay.
Discussion?
Sure.
I just wanna make sure when this does come back, is the zoning, that we do have a lot of options for the ADUs. Staff's made me some references to where they're expecting every unit that comes in's gonna be smaller than one that's there, sometimes it's not gonna be as beneficial to the people, so I just wanna make sure when we look at it, we look at all the options that the people want, to try to keep, let's say, bigger growth from coming in, but more, more efficient use of the space, so families can actually live on their larger parcels together as they want, and just make it more flexible.
Yeah, and I think they do have size restrictions, but we'll, we'll go over all of that. Okay, so we have a motion, did I get a second?
I think it's roll call, right?
It is a roll call.
I think I still need a second. Okay, roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
You cannot do that.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano. District 3 Chairman Starkey.
Aye. So you have an opportunity to speak at, at any public hearing, but you have to do that when I call for public...
Comment.
Comment, so you cannot, you can stand up and come to the podium when I ask if there's any public comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I turn, maybe clearly tell the folks...
Yeah, no yelling from the audience.
...how to, pre-prepared to come up and speak?
Yeah.
For the item, that sort of thing.
So the portion of the agenda they're on right now are the ordinances, which, which are on the agenda as 30, 31, 32, 33, the, the, if the, if there is, if there is an item which you wish to speak to, you're given three minutes when the chair calls for public comment. You should have pre-registered on the list, but they'll still take your public comment, but you have to come up when comment is called. At 34, the public will be sworn in, those are quasi-judicial hearings, those are rezoning amendments, so 34 through the end of the agenda, end of the public hearing agenda, will be taken up, and those will be, most of those will be sworn in public hearings. I will read the procedures for rezoning when we get to that portion of the agenda.
Okay, so we are on P-32.
We have proof of publication originally for the, in the Tampa Bay Times, January 15th, 22nd, 29th, and February 5th, 2025, for the February 11th Board of County Commissioners meeting, where it was continued to today.
Item P-32 is PDE 250077, this is an ordinance establishing the KD-52 Community Development District Number 1, pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and duties of the district, providing for the Board of Supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay, this is a CDD district, right? And is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on the establishment of the CDD district? Is there anybody online?
No, no man.
Roll call vote? Well, no, I'm sorry, the motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3 Chairman Starkey.
Aye. P-33.
P-33, just a moment, please, ma'am. P-33, again, was originally published in the January 15th, 22nd, 29th, and February 5th editions of the Tampa Bay Times, for the February 11th BCC meeting where it was continued to today.
Item P-33 is PDE 250081, this is an ordinance establishing KD-52 Community Development District Number 2, pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and duties of the district, providing for the Board of Supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Move to approve.
First I have to take public comment, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak on the establishment of the CDD district?
We have no one signed up online, the only person signed up in advance, I believe, is the applicant.
Okay, and I see the applicant in the audience. All right, board members, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
One or your second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3 Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay, we are now going to proceed to the public hearings, and will the county attorney please review the procedures for rezoning, and see you later.
Be happy to, Madam Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given... applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's land development code. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear the public in?
At this time, anyone who have plans to give testimony to any of the rezoning items, we'd ask that you please stand. Again, if you plan on testifying or believe that you may testify in any of the rezoning items, please stand, raise your right hand.
And if you're online, you also participate, right?
Do you and each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in these matters is the truth, so have you got? Thank you. When you come forward, please be sure to give your name and address for the record, and also if you would acknowledge that you were previously sworn. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are now on P thirty-four, which is a continuance. Go ahead Terry. Oh, do you need to read?
P thirty-four. We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the January eighth, twenty twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P thirty-four is P D E twenty-five seven seven six-nine. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Mears Four LLC. It's a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District and C three Commercial Light Manufacturing District to a C three Commercial Light Manufacturing District in northwest Pasco County, essentially at the southeast corner of the intersect of the bridge, intersection of Sun Coast Parkway and Shady Hills Road. It's about nine point one acres. This is a request to continue the item to the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting at one thirty PM in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue, time certain?
One second. Was this advertised as a continuance?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to take public comment on this?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Second.
All in favor of the continuance?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, P thirty-five?
P thirty-five, we have an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings on this matter.
Item P thirty-five is P D E twenty-five seven eight one three. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Anclot TH or Town Homes MPUD by Lennar Homes LLC. It's a rezoning request from AC Agricultural and AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to MPUD Master Planning and Development District to allow further development of one hundred ninety townhome dwelling units and associate infrastructure on approximately forty-six point oh three acres in southwestern Pasco County. The request is to continue the item to the March twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting at one thirty PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, and this was an advertised continuance, I'll take a motion.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, P thirty-six.
P thirty-six was originally advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on August the twenty-eighth, nineteen, twenty twenty-four, for the meeting of October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, where it was continued to December tenth, where it was continued to January twenty-eighth, where it was continued to today.
Item P thirty-six is P D E twenty-five seven eight one-eight. This is a zoning amendment in the name of HCM Hospitality LLC. It's a change in zoning from a C two general commercial district and MF one multiple family medium density district to an MF one multiple family medium density district.
Excuse me, please make sure all your phones are silenced. Sorry Terry.
It's in west central Pasco County on the east side of US nineteen, US Highway nineteen, approximately nine hundred fifty feet south of State Road fifty-two, containing approximately four point four four acres. It's a request to continue the item to the March twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting at one thirty PM in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue, time certain?
This was an advertised continuance, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're on to our consent agenda. Okay, we'll, we'll take up P thirty-seven and if someone has, wants to object, we'll take it off.
I'm going to be pulling it.
Okay, all right, so P thirty-seven is going to be pulled. Let's go to P thirty-eight.
P thirty-eight, we have proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times, January eighth, twenty twenty-five, supplemented by an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P thirty-eight is P D E twenty-five seven seven nine-nine. This is a zoning amendment. It's a substantial modification to the Pristine Lake Preserve MPUD by Walker Development Company. It's a rezoning request to substantially modify the Pristine Lake Preserve MPUD to amend the Pristine Lake Preserve MPUD uses and to allow for the development of a seven thousand five hundred square foot office building. This comes to you with a recommendation to approve the MPUD rezoning request and the attached rezoning conditions of approval.
Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to object to P thirty-eight? Is there anyone online who wishes to object to P thirty-eight?
No, we have only one person online and, or two people online for a different matter.
Okay, so we will.
This is your opportunity.
Yeah.
Then you need to come up to the mic.
Come on up to the mic then, but, well, hang on, I'll pull this off the consent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hang on one second, and then you can come up when we call P thirty-eight. All right, so now we're on to P thirty-nine.
I'm going to pull that one as well.
Okay, P thirty-nine is off the consent.
That's the end of consent.
That's the end of consent, so we have no consent. Okay, so let's go back to P thirty-seven.
I thought we already did, but we did not. Okay. We have proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, January eighth, and supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P thirty-seven is P D E twenty-five CU zero five. This is a conditional use amendment in the name of Spanish Lakes Land Company LLC slash Spanish Lakes CU. It's a conditional use amendment to remove height limitation for previously approved multifamily dwellings in a C two general commercial district. It's in west central Pasco County, it's approximately a hundred fifty feet north of State Road fifty-two, east of Deerbrook Boulevard, containing approximately eighteen point six five acres. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to submit ex parte forms that were received with regard to Spanish Lakes, I believe for each of the commissioners.
I don't, I don't think I had one. Does it say there that I had one?
Yes.
I did?
Yes.
Okay.
On two twenty-four.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Mariano also had for two twenty-four and today. Additionally, there's ex parte communication that was sent by Ms. Jennifer Kerouac to each of the commissioners that can be submitted to the court's office as well.
Madam Chair, just for further acknowledgement, I've spoken with a couple of residents in the neighborhood as well.
Okay. Go ahead with the presentation, please.
As I noted, this is proposals for a conditional use amendment in a C two general commercial district, which is in the MU mixed use, future land use category. The applicant is requesting a conditional use amendment to remove the height limitation for previously approved multifamily dwellings in a C two general commercial district, consistent with the underlying C two zoning district, which has no height limitation in the urban service area where this property is located. The existing conditional use permit caps height at about thirty-five feet. This is the general location. It is at the northeast corner, if you will, of State Road fifty-two and the interchange, at the northeast part of the interchange of State Road fifty-two and the Sun Coast Parkway. It's actually just to the east of the alignment of Vision Road, Deerbrook Boulevard, which is the outline that you see in black and white coming up the center of the, of the screen. That's not working. Shady Hills is to the east and north of the subject property, and the subject property does not quite abut State Road fifty-two to the south, although it does abut a stub which connects to the road, which goes to the west into the subdivision along Sun Coast Highway. The connection at Deerbrook Boulevard does connect to State Road fifty-two, it's unsignaled. It is the continuation of the Vision Road that passes through Angeline or the Bexley properties that ultimately connect south to Sun Lake Boulevard through Angeline. This is the subject property area. You can see the stub out to the south and west of the property. This is illustrating the zoning for the area, for the future land use and the zoning for the area here. So the subject property is currently vacant on approximately eighteen point six five acres. On February eighth, two thousand and five, the Board of County Commissioners approved petition number CU oh five oh one for multifamily dwellings in a C two general commercial district with conditions that limit the height of all buildings to be thirty-five feet in height. Access to the property is from Shady Hills, a county maintained collector road, it's approximately sixty-six feet of right of way, and Deerbrook Boulevard, which is the, which was the stub connection at the east, or excuse me, at the south and west of the property. And that is a county maintained residential road as it moves east-west, but a county collector as it moves north-south, Vision Road, with approximately a hundred feet, a hundred and five feet of right of way. Since there was no approved road study in the alignment of roadway A, which is the Deerbrook Boulevard connection that I pointed out, on the highway vision plan is only conceptual, the applicant met with the Planning Development Economic Growth Department as well as the Transportation Engineering Department and the County Attorney's Office on several occasions to work on an alignment of roadway A, the Deerbrook Boulevard, north-south Vision Road, which provides connectivity at State Road fifty-two and the existing intersection with the Deerbrook Boulevard and connectivity at Shady Hills Road, which will go along the west edge and east to Shady Hills, and allows for the development of the property for multifamily dwellings as approved by the BCC in two thousand and five. So in two thousand and five, that Vision Road connection that was crossing the property was not there. The Vision Road came about much later, in about twenty twenty, when the Angeline project, Project Arthur, was moving through the area. This is the way the Vision Road was conceptually mapped on the property, showing the extent of what right of way would be required of the Vision Road connection. This would be the Deerbrook Boulevard, north-south to Shady Hills on the north end. And then this graphic illustrates option A, which was discussed between the various departments and the applicant, to realign the Vision Road along the western edge of the subject property, go a little bit further north and turn it to the east to connect to Shady Hills. This graphic also illustrates the extent of the right of way and the type of acquisitions that would be required in terms of dedications for the subject property and potential acquisitions from neighboring wetlands to the west. This is option B, which is slightly different option. And then since the publication of the agenda, there was an update to the maximum building height proposed for this project. Initially, they were, the applicant was requesting to remove the height restriction that the board had imposed in two thousand and five, that thirty-five feet, and simply go with the urban service area policy, which allows for no height regulation in the urban service area. However, the applicant has voluntarily capped their building height at four stories. So that is the update regarding the height limitation. And with that, the Planning Development Economic Growth Department recommends approval with conditions of the requested zoning amendment to the Board of County Commissioners.
Terry, what you just mentioned, is that the revision that was in revision from the originally published memo?
Yes, and I believe those were submitted this morning.
Okay, so on my agenda here, is that revision on here? I'm looking at it on, online. Just curious. And then, board members, are there any questions of Terry before we get the applicant to speak? Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had not been, done any meeting on this until just half an hour ago.
I don't think I had one, so.
Yeah, so which is very unusual, especially with what's going on. So I'm going to tell you the discussions I had to what's going on, to the changes I've suggested, and I think all of the applicant talked to them, Terry's already been informed to it. So what I didn't like is just the, the addition of the additional height. In looking at the road, I didn't like the way the roads were going to be constructed. If you saw the three options that were on there, each road was set up differently. One was seven point nine million, one was eight point two million, the other was ten point seven million. A lot of money for us to go spend. This Vision Road situation, this comes up next to a mobile station Dunkin' Donuts, as it comes up, it hits a neighborhood that goes to the left, and then this road, Vision Road goes to the right, which will then connect out to Shady Hills Boulevard. What I don't like about the sections for A and B is they were both going to hit close to four acres of wetlands, which I didn't see any need to go do that. What it also does, both of them go up to the north, one of them actually takes out a house, which increases all your right of way costs and everything very substantially. When I look at what I want to see, and we talk about connectivity, I think our code's going to do it, and Terry might be able to speak to it more, the main thing with this development, it should connect from that intersection all the way out to Shady Hills Road on a free flow. I don't think it's going to be a heavily used route.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Can you expand the map Terry? Maybe put a different picture up there? Okay, so if you look on the left side of the screen where it says Oak Ramble Drive, the State Road fifty-two, so from that point, if it goes diagonally out to Shady Hills Road, that's an important connection. That will take a lot of people that may use this, the retail here, to be able to get to Shady Hills and back, and for those that want to come down to the south, they can cut through, it's what we want to see. I don't think it warrants a Vision Road, and I'll say why. You've got a Shady Hills Road to the right, at the end of that road is a signalized intersection. In my opinion, that's where the Vision Road should be coming, where it's all uniform, so you don't have to do anything. We don't want to put in the light down there at that Vision Road where it's proposed to be, but we do want to promote the access. So I'm going to make suggestions that we let the developer build the road, doesn't have to be the sixty foot wide, doesn't be a collector, but it's got to be a free-flowing, no gates to impede it, where people can go from Shady Hills to that intersection and, and hit that retail part and go through the neighborhood, well, just like a regular neighborhood thing would be at other areas. Also on Shady Hills Road, I want to make sure that we do have enough, so you have a left turn in and a right turn in, so that you have turn lanes coming in, so it doesn't slow down the traffic, because it's still many years before we actually improve Shady Hills Road. As far as the height restriction going to four stories, what we're going to get is going to save a lot of money, improve a connection point, and even though we're already locked into the units that are going to go in and whatever numbers they get to, if we get that connection, I can, I'll, I'll listen to public comment, but taking that height restriction going from three, three stories to four stories, they'll end up with a better product because they'll have elevators in, but it'll also make the connection, which if we don't do this, they could have their own connections, but they could also gate it off and you wouldn't have the connection either. So I could spend ten million dollars of taxpayer money, or seven million, destroying wetlands, or let development come in and make it work where we want it to work, just with that code the way it sits.
Well, I have some questions on taking away the status of that road, because I hear that this is a Vision Road that's going south, and we need our, we need our grid, so I'm not, I got to listen to the effect of that, because the grid is important, otherwise you get very crowded roads like you have on Shady Hills, so I just want to hear, I don't think I had a meeting on this, but maybe I did, but I, I need to hear about the importance of that connector road before I'm willing to.
Do you want it staffed or?
Or, well, let's, let Barbara do her presentation, unless anyone else has any questions for Terry now. I may have some after Barbara speaks, but.
Commissioners Barbara will hide eighty-six thirty-seven Grand Boulevard for the applicant. So jumping to the, the issues discussed, we do have a condition that David and I worked on to deal with making sure that what the commissioner's saying that happens internally to our project happens, so people can come to and from Shady Hills to Deerbrook Drive and get to the Dunkin' Donuts. and get to Dunkin' Donuts, the car wash, through our project. So, we have a condition that David has agreed to that we can put into the record. Now, with regard to the Vision Road, we're not proposing, this is ultimately your decision, but we're not proposing that we take away what we've put together, which is 30 feet of our property will go towards that Vision Road, so that you have ultimate choices, right? So, you have a choice now that we're going to develop to provide the connectivity, and if someday in the future the county wants to do that Vision Road, they'll have our part of the right-of-way. And I understand from David is that because it's in the comp plan, we can change the alignment, but you can't remove it without a comp plan amendment. So, what I would ask today is that we leave it like it is, with our property making accommodation for a Vision Road pursuant to the alignment that we worked out with the county engineer and a bunch of staff people, and then add a condition that talks about what our project will do as far as the connectivity. And then, when you update your Vision Road map in the future, and I was just sitting with staff, and they were talking about updating it again on, when I was at a different project, then you all can talk about this Vision Road, particularly whether you're going to leave it on or take it off, but we'll accommodate it if you leave it on. So, it can be a substantive conversation where you can really hear from staff when you're doing the Vision Road map generally. So, that's what I would suggest, so that we can move this project forward and come up with our solution, then you all can talk more globally about whether you want that Vision Road on there or not for the future. So, that's my suggestion, if that's acceptable. The other thing is, yes, I did check with Steve Henry and the turn lanes. We didn't do access management with this, because all we were doing was amending an existing conditional use that allows for apartments, and just changing the height from three to four stories, so we can have an elevator product, which is a better product, as Commissioner Mariano has mentioned. But we will be having a turn lane, we'll have a turn lane requirement when we come through site plan, a right turn lane off Shady Hills and a left turn lane in, because obviously the capacity of that major road, you don't want anybody sitting in traffic waiting for our traffic to turn left, or our traffic slowing down to turn right. So, we will have a turn lane requirement at site plan.
Okay, and what I, you know, we are going to see this site plan, well, are we going to see it, or staff going to see it?
Staff will see it, but I did mention to you that we'll sit with you with the site plan. You know, you want to talk about neighborhood parks and.
And just for transparency here to the board members, because I did talk to Barbara this morning on this, and just that we typically waive the open space requirement for apartments, and I'm getting reluctant to waive the whole thing, and I want to find a happy medium, but I think we need more green space with our apartments, so I mentioned that to Barbara, and.
And we will work on that with you.
Yeah.
And staff.
Okay, so, is that the extent of your presentation?
It is. Let me see what the public comment is, and I'd be glad to talk some more.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Barbara, could you just read the condition you're proposing for the record?
Absolutely. Here. Prior to final building inspection, for the certificate of occupancy for the first residential building within the project, the project shall be required to convey a public access easement over and across an internal accessway to ensure automobile traffic, bicycles, and pedestrians can access and utilize the internal accessway within the project to and from Shady Hills Road and to and from Deerbrook Boulevard, and the project shall not be gated.
I'm looking at number four. Findings of fact, there's an existing multi-use path along the north side of 52, Deerbrook, so this all stays.
Yeah, we, yes, and we have a condition that instead of the required five-foot sidewalk on Shady Hills, it's eight feet. We also have a condition that says that our buildings will not front Shady Hills. We don't have any parking up to Shady Hills, we'll have our ponds, and then we'll have our buildings. So, our buildings will be set back from Shady Hills Road, because a couple of design things that I know would be of interest to you.
Well, that, I don't know why someone's doing that. I don't want to see the parking in the middle with the buildings around it personally, but.
Well, pond, building, parking.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll take public comment, and then we'll come back to you probably.
First person I have signed up, and I apologize, Robert, is it Cargo?
Carlo.
Carlo?
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Carlo, address 12753 Drakefield Drive, Spring Hill, Florida, 34610. I've been sworn in. And I'm the H.O.A. president, and we've.
Of what?
Of Deerfield Lakes, Pasco.
Okay.
Okay. So, we've been watching the growth in the area, and the biggest concerns really are the flow of traffic. That area, that commercial area, does get heavily used at Dunkin' Donuts and the Circle K, and right now, there tends to be traffic flow through our community to cut the light at Shady Hills. So much so, and I'm not going to name the school, but they tell their parents, oh, if you're late, just cut through our community, and you can get to school on time. The big concern is that the Vision Road project doesn't extend south right now, and it's a right turn only when you exit from Deerbrook, and if those residents want to get out of the apartments, they're going to either cut through our neighborhood, or have to go all the way past Sun Coast and actually make a U-turn. They're going to tend to go through our community, and that's been the biggest concern. And I'm not sure how the order of building and construction development goes in this project. I'm not opposed to the height, I, you know, I am opposed in a sense, we are opposed that it's more people. It goes from 140 unit to 300 units, it's a lot of cars, it's a lot of people. I appreciate the fact that with a four-story, it's going to be a nicer-looking community, it's going to have the elevators, that's all great, it's just how do you deal with that much vehicle traffic in that area when it's a right turn only? And is Vision Road going to be built first, or are the apartments going to be built first? If the apartments are going to be built first, all that traffic is going to flow through our neighborhood. So, those are the biggest concerns that we're, that our community's concerned about right now, and hopefully we can, you know, debate this a little bit better and understand the flow of traffic as it pertains to these different roads that are considered for construction for this apartment complex. You know, there's been a history of our community that I want to go through, and I know Mr. Mariano, we talked to our prior president, Bill Hux, we had an identity on 52, we had a monument, and today's cost is probably a $50,000 monument, that we had to take down at our own cost. So, we've constantly been giving things up. With the Vision Road, we also have to give up land. So, we keep giving, and giving, and giving, and we want to make sure that the considerations include our community, and that we understand the traffic flow and how our community's going to be affected, and if things are going to, you know, get out of control with people cutting through our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone else to speak?
That's the only one signed up for this item.
Can we pull up a map?
Yeah, I'm looking at it on my.
To see where.
Then, proceed forward if you want to speak to this item.
If anyone else wants to speak to this item, excuse me, you cannot yell from back there. Come on up. But if anyone else wants to speak, go ahead and get in the aisle here on P. 37.
Hi, Jessica Conoff, I live, do I have to give my address?
You have to give your address, yeah.
Okay. 12445 Kirkwood Drive in Deerfield.
Now, were you, did you?
Yes, I was sworn in, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, same concerns as the H.O.A. president. The infrastructure is not where it needs to be to support an additional housing community. We have Angeline going on in Down 52. We also have a 55 and up community being built down Shady Hills Road, which is going to bring in a substantial amount of traffic down Shady Hills. And, you know, this, as he stated, the height difference of just increasing it by five feet to allow, you know, an additional story will substantially increase the traffic coming through our neighborhood. You know, it's, it's great that, you know, we have all of these people moving to our wonderful county, but unfortunately, we can't, as a community, you know, handle the traffic. We have to think of the safety of the young kids that play in the front yards, or on the side, the families walking with the kids and the dogs, and, you know, people, unfortunately, they don't drive a safe speed all the time through the communities. It's sometimes treated like a raceway. People trying to get from point A to point B as fast as possible aren't always paying attention these days. Everybody's texting and driving, and, you know, with this projected plan, either, you know, we're taking away part of our wetlands to create a through street for the new community of apartments to get from their community to Shady Hills, or, you know, when 52 was redone, they took away our ability to turn left out of our neighborhood, so now we can only turn right, go down two traffic lights, do a U-turn, or go out the back way to Shady Hills to turn left at the light. So, these are major things that need to be thought about when thinking about this new project. So, the height requirement does play a big part of this. You can put in an elevator in a three-story project. It is possible. So, please just take all of these factors into account when thinking about this, and, you know, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. What just happened over there?
No.
Oh. Okay, that was interesting. Okay, hey. Name and address.
Hi. Pastor John Care, WAC 15925, Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida, and I'm coming today. There were a couple of things that I noticed, and.
Were you here when?
Oh, I already swore. I was sworn in. I didn't swear. Oh, my gosh, I didn't say that. Only time you'll probably see me get rid. I just wanted to come forward today. The concern about the height requirement, you know, and does present, I would say, if I lived in Deerfield Lakes, that would be an issue for me, because, you know, the potential of looking over into their neighborhood when folks bought in, it wasn't like that. The other thing that, you know, the transportation is a serious concern. I echo, and I won't go into what the previous woman mentioned. The other thing that I noticed, so, as far as providing, and I might have lost my, the proof of publication, the affidavit of posting, I didn't see Quail Ridge on here, and they do meet at the church, and I spoke with the folks that are with the Master Association and the folks with the regular association, not the Villas, and I didn't see where they were on here, and they did tell me that they weren't aware that this was happening. I just don't see them, and sometimes they have different names. But, again, the main concern I echo is, you know, the issue with regards to the traffic that is going to increase on Shady Hills Road. It's a tight area, putting 300, even if it was one car per unit, which, you know, I don't know that, I mean, I have two cars, I don't know about anybody else, but, you know, the, and one of the things that was in the presentation is that it would not increase the traffic flow. So, I think that it seems as if we're utilizing things from 2005, but we're also trying to bring in the things that are now, and 2005 was not as busy in this area as it is now, and I think we're all aware of that. And so, I would just ask that you take into consideration the email that I had submitted, those points that I made there as part of the record, as well as my testimony today. I did submit pictures after that that showed there was also no sign on Shady Hills Road, so even if Quail Ridge didn't receive a letter, they would not have known about the meeting unless they went to like the, behind the mobile and Dunkin' Donuts area there, because that's where the sign was posted. So, I ask at a minimum that you, you know, you know, continue, maybe neighborhood meeting or something to that effect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Do we have anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with Commissioner Waitman over there. Is that about this, is that about this hearing? Barbara, I don't know what you want to do there.
Me either.
The administrator, the attorney, and.
I didn't even notice.
Unappropriate, isn't it?
Yeah. It is inappropriate. We're going to pause the meeting until y'all come back.
All right. So, I wanted to emphasize the condition that Commissioner Mariano, you know, pointed out and that I read. That is the condition that provides for the connectivity that doesn't exist now from Deerbrook to Shady Hills without going through Deerfield Lakes. So, that is the importance of your interconnection, and that the board has a policy of and talks about all the time, because now the traffic, if they wanted to avoid the intersection of Shady Hills and 52, may go through Deerfield Lakes. This project will find, will have a different alternative to that, and it'd be more direct than going up through Deerfield Lakes.
Yeah.
The other thing I'm not sure that the residents might realize, but this property is owned C2. Yes, it's approved for apartments, and it's already, that decision was made that it's appropriate for apartments, but C2 is five times a traffic generator that they would see, so I think that's just important to understand. Regarding the concern regarding height.
For the public, so, what you're saying is a commercial use there drives much more traffic than.
Generates five times amount of traffic.
Five times the amount of traffic in an apartment complex.
Correct. The other thing regarding visual, obviously, that's always, you know, an issue, and we always looked at that specifically, but in this case, the nearest home in Deerfield Lakes is 300, 933 feet away, 933 feet away. It's also in between this project and those homes in Deerfield Lakes. There is a very mature wetland area.
Yeah, I can see.
With high trees. So, and then to our north is C2 property with no height limitation, because it's in the urban service area, and to our south is a C2 property with no height limitation. So, just to give some context to, you know, how the traffic goes today, how it could go under C2, what we're proposing with the condition that Commissioner Mariano worked with us on.
I'm trying to understand that condition, because what I haven't gotten here yet is the, the part of the vision network and how this relates to Angeline, and when we say Angeline, I'm going to guess what we're talking about is that the ORC property that is not part of Angeline, or is it part of Angeline, but you can't speak, but he can speak. The property to the south, isn't that the land that is not owned by Metro?
Yes, I can, I'll, we'll pull up a map in just a second, I'll draw the line for you.
Yeah, don't leave, Barbara, you can hang up.
I'm not going anywhere. And again, we're, we are fine with what we worked out with staff on the Vision Road, it keeps your options open. I think it works well.
Can you explain to me what Jack was, what he was saying, because I didn't understand it? I don't know if you guys.
Well, I think, I think the question is, you know, why is this Vision Road here?
Well, I know that's important.
How did it come to be? The Vision Road used to be aligned coming up through the Bexley property. It was aligned to the intersection. This Vision Road was aligned to the intersection to make a four-way intersection at 52, and.
And Dunkin' Donuts, whatever?
No, and Shady Hills.
Oh.
So, that's what your vision plan was. When Angeline came in, for whatever reason, obviously, I'm not a party to any of that, it was decided that to not have the Vision Road make a four-lane intersection with 52 and Shady Hills, and staff agreed, and ultimately you all agreed, to realign it, so it would go up through Deerbrook, which isn't, you've heard staff, you heard the public comment, it's not a intersection, it doesn't have a light, it's only got a right-in, right-out, and so, obviously, that would probably change if it became a full Vision Road. But that's just, I think, what Commissioner Mariano was just referring to, which was, how thought-out was that? But what I'd like to do is talk about this project, and have you all work on your Vision Road map, when you, the next update to it, you can talk about what you feel about this Vision Road, but what we'd like to do is be able to come forward and offer our project, our solution, and ultimately, you know, provide a project that's going to provide that interconnected. and ultimately, you know, provide a project that's going to provide that interconnectivity that gives more options of how people get around and even the Deerfield Lakes folks get around and how people don't have to go through their project to go from Deerbrook to Shady Hills, they can now come through our project. So that's kind of the explanation.
Yeah.
But I'd rather you, you know, the whole Vision Road is probably a discussion when you talk about your Vision Roads.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. All right, Terry. So is that, is that Deerfield intersect, I guess that's deer, is that Deerfield, Deer, let me look here, Deerbrook Boulevard, is that slated to become a, a full intersection?
Uh, you can see my...
Cause we can't, I feel like we took away a full intersection unless someone can explain something to me, something different.
The Vision, I'll explain the Vision Road network in the area really quick. This is State Route 52 across the north, end of the map here, Suncoast Parkway is right here. What you see, the red line coming down from, south from State Route 52, this is Sunlake Boulevard moving through Angeline. Right about this location in Angeline, Connector, Vision Connector Road A.
Okay.
Veers to the west and moves through this portion of Project Arthur, which were the seller retained properties when we were planning this project. Connector A, sorry, it's a battle with a mouse.
So we'll have another bridge over the wildlife corridor.
So Connector A will come up this way, all the way up to State Route 54. When Project Ar...
State Route 52.
52, I'm sorry, yes. State Route 52. And when Project Arthur was planned, this segment of the Vision Road was created and linked over to Shady Hills so that you could have this clean north-south all the way up to Shady Hills.
Nice.
Versus the line coming across the prop, the seller's properties over here, Project Arthur sellers, and connecting to Shady Hills at that point. So that's when this Vision Road came into existence at that time.
So that is the Vision Road right now?
That is the Vision Road. And that's what's known as the Deerbrook Connector.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So keep in mind, when, when I, the current Vision Road, the cost for right-of-way going that way is right now at $7 million just about? I don't know why we want to spend $7 million, right? Secondly, I don't know why...
Versus what? Versus what?
I'm just saying that just the right-of-way to put the Vision Road where they want, where they want to put it.
Talking about from 52 to Shady Hills?
From 52 to Shady Hills, correct.
I think that's a pretty important road.
Well, we're gonna get the road without spending a dime. I'd rather do that. The other thing is, from that road, that Connector Road A, that should go to the light. I don't know why anybody would not say...
That Polly's ship has sailed, I'm gonna guess. But I agree, it should have gone to the light.
Either, either way, so if it's gonna come up, you're gonna go through that little part and then you're getting to Shady Hills Road and you're gonna drive all those people to try to get up Shady Hills Road and make the turn? So be it, wherever it comes out. But regardless, I can now build a road that'll connect through, make a better connection. As a matter of fact, the folks at Deerfield, if they're coming across, whereas you right now said you gotta go down two lights, two U-turn, come back over since the axle was cut off, you guys would actually benefit from this because now you can come down to that thing.
Yeah.
And you can cut out through and now you get to Shady Hills and take a right turn. You're at a light. You're, you can't say anything. But, but I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I mean, you got a great neighborhood up there. But I think this might even help you with even the cut-through stuff with what goes on. Now here's the thing, they're approved from 2005. And at that time, those who want to get mad, we didn't have any apartments anywhere. Right? We were just looking for things to come in. And the C2, we're trying to get commercials to go up and down and sometimes you need the heads to get with it, what was gonna come. They're gonna cap themselves at 360 max. So it's gone down from what that number, and I don't think they would've got 432 anyway, but let's say they're keeping it the same by going vertical. If we put the turn lanes in on the road, it's gonna make it a better access to it. And again, we need a lot of money and you can talk to our engineer, Nick Urin, about how much money we don't have. But if I can take $7 million or $10 million out of our capital budget and not have to go invest into this road, I can do more things up there. Now I can actually look at the board to say, you know what, we oughta go look at these impact fees that this thing's gonna generate. And let's continue doing more projects up there, like we're doing right now.
Are you saying the develop, just let the developer build a smaller road? I, I, I'm just trying to understand what the $7 million savings is gonna come from.
You're right, cause now we don't have to build the road, but it's gonna be available...
Well, if they come in, they're building the road.
They're gonna build the road. This way here. Yeah, and it's gonna be public access. There'll be a sidewalk on both sides. You're gonna connect where you wanna connect at the stub, all the way to Shady Hills, you're gonna get the turn lanes you want. So when you do expand the road later, you've got the capacity to do so as well.
Are they doing an eight-foot sidewalk on one of the sides?
Can I clarify what Barbara's proposing and she may want to come back up?
Yeah, I heard 30 feet.
I don't know that she's proposing an actual road. She's proposing that the drive aisles that the apartment complex would already have to build anyway, would be open to the public and that they would be, connect Deerbrook to Shady Hills. I don't think that she's committing she's gonna build a Vision Road through the middle of her project.
Not in the middle, right? It, the projects to the...
We can, the road, we cannot accommodate a Vision Road through this project. And ultimately, that's why if you look at the different Vision Road alternatives, the Vision Road through the property, ultimately, obviously we wouldn't have a project, we're, we're out of it and you're working with the property owner and it's very, very, you'd have to buy the right-of-way. So that's what would jack up your cost. Now, but again, what I, what I, you cannot, David has said, you cannot cha, you cannot make a decision regarding that Vision Road today to change and say, we don't want it. That is a conversation you need to have when you come back and are updating your Vision Road, Vision Road map. So what you're, what I'm asking is, the solution that we've come up with, we had the solution that we will accommodate 30 feet of that Vision Road if you ever want to do a Vision Road. If not, it will be green space if you never want to do a Vision Road, right? So, and then you'll make that decision, you can have a conversation with all of your staff, ready to talk about, should there be Deerbrook extension on your Vision Road or shouldn't there be? But that's, David's like, you can't make that decision today because you don't have a comp plan amendment before you updating your Vision Road map. So what we're saying is, leave the 30 feet that we're dedicating. If you decide in the future to take that off your, your Vision Road map, then it'll just be green space. And then have the condition that I read in regarding the interconnectivity that we'll be able to travel through our project. No, it's not the same as your Vision Road. But the point is that people can travel through, like many of us do, to get from point A to point B, we travel through other development. That's your connectivity ordinance and that's what we're proposing here. We're proposing, your connectivity ordinance just makes you connect, but what the county attorney's office and staff have been working with many of my clients is on, is making sure that there's a condition that requires that public access easement. And so that's the condition we're writing here, to ensure that pedestrians, bikes and traffic can throw, flow through our project to get from Shady Hills Road to 52 via Deerbrook. And that's what we put together.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So David, help me with this, cause again, we just met right before this. I had never met with this project before, so I'm just trying to make something work if it's gonna work. I want to make sure that I don't need the huge Vision Road that we're gonna have. I want to give up on that idea, though I know I gotta do one amendment for that later on. But I want to have enough where they can put a road through that's gonna be free flow of traffic, sidewalks on both sides, so that people from the stub there can get the Shady Hills Road. So whether it be 30 feet, whatever the number is, I need you to probably say what it's gotta be.
What Barbara's proposed, I don't think is consistent with what you're saying.
So what do I need to say that I want to see to make it happen?
Okay, well then we're gonna...
Let me, let me talk to her.
All right.
I'm sure that they're offering this, okay, but what, you would need to say that it's a public, that it's a, you would have to establish the width and that it's a roadway with no parking and sidewalks on both sides. I don't know if that's what Barbara's proposing, but if that's what you're wanting is free flow, then it couldn't have any parking along it. And you would need to have sidewalks on both sides. But again, I don't think that that's, that's not what the condition says. So, but I'll let Barbara comment, cause I don't think she's ever offered that.
No, I, I didn't. And we, we specifically talked about the fact that it would, you know, we have our, we could have our parking adjacent to that area where the free flow of traffic will go. So I wrote, I mean, you know, I'm, I write what we talk about and that's what I do. But that's certainly what we talked about was the fact that we could still have parking. Cause if not, I don't, then you're saying we gotta take right-of-way out of this property and we're gonna have that same issue of what happens to the plan if we do that. So it, so we're, we can meet the connectivity ordinance and provide for the free flow of traffic through our project. The question is, are we allowed to park and have the traffic come through our parking area or not? We're proposing to provide that free, free flow of traffic with a public easement over it that allows the traffic to go through. But we're just saying, allow it so we can configure our site, so we can go use our site to allow that traffic to come through. And if it's a parking area, you know, and there's parking for the different units and that free flow of traffic's going through, and yes, there'll be sidewalks, but it would be road, parking, sidewalks, cause you have sidewalks amongst, along the buildings. So the sidewalks would be there. It's just the issue, like David's pointing out, is would we be allowed to have, to have parking?
Let me, let me, let me say something.
So Barbara's correct, the condition does require bike-ped interconnectivity too. So there would, a bicycle or pedestrian would have to be able to get from Shady Hills Road to Deerbrook. It may not be along a, a straight route, but that connect, connectivity would have to exist.
I, I, is this Vision Road new? This, this Vision, Connector Road A, is it new?
So Madam Chair, it was, as Terry explained, it was added when we approved Angeline.
Okay. And that's before this project came in? So this project knew there was a Vision Road on their property?
No, actually, no, it was the opposite.
No?
We approved this project first for apartments, then we approved Angeline and put the Vision Road over their property, which they were not happy about.
Okay.
That's the reason why staff worked with them to try to realign the Vision Road so that it wouldn't destroy their project.
Okay, I personally, I'm okay with the parking on the road because I look at Rangeland. Now we have to tweak what on-street parking for collector or arterial roads look like, which is what this would be, right? Because we have people parking commercial vehicles on Rangeland, which is not okay.
I don't think Barbara's proposing a collector road going through her project. She's proposing, I want to be clear.
I'm okay with parking on the street. That's all I'm saying. We have it on Rangeland, which is a major road.
But I, David's point is correct. What you're getting is driving through a parking lot versus...
Maintained by whom?
Maintained by the apartment complex.
Why would we want that?
That's what your interconnectivity ordinance actually requires, is that we provide interconnectivity through our developed project. That's what, that's what your interconnectivity requires.
This is difficult because I believe this is an important connection, especially to Deerbrook.
The best way to think of this is any apartment complex you drive through has a drive aisles in the apartment complex. She's proposing that those drive aisles would be open to the public and they would connect Deerbrook to Shady Hills and that there would be sidewalks that connect Shady Hills to Deerbrook.
So it looks, kinda looks like a road, but it isn't really a road.
It's, to me, it's the functional equivalent of like...
It functions as a road.
When you, when you drive through...
Two-lane?
When you drive through a commercial shopping center, they have drive aisles in them.
Yeah.
So, and sometimes they have parking along them and sometimes they don't, but Barbara, Barbara wants the ability to park along it too. So do not, I would not view this as a typical county collector road.
Right. Is there, are there, you know, we haven't seen a site plan, so are there apartments on both sides of this road? Because you're pretty close to the wetland on the right.
Yeah, I don't have the road, the road, our access...
It isn't laid out, really?
Laid out.
Okay.
But I think it'll function to get vehicles and pedestrians to and from Shady Hills and, and Deerbrook, and that'll happen now through our project. That's what your connectivity ordinance says to do.
Is there a D cell, a D cell lane on Shady Hills to turn into it?
There will be a right-turn D cell lane and a left-turn in lane. So that whether you're turning left in the project, you're not sitting in the travel lane, and whether you're turning right, slowing down to turn light, you're not, to turn right, you're not slowing down the traffic on Shady Hills Road.
And they said the access coming out of Deerbrook has changed. Do we anticipate that that's gonna be a full-service interchange?
Well, that's, that is the conversation when you guys discuss what you want to do with your Vision Road.
When it comes in below.
Yeah.
And that would be the developer coming in below, right?
Yeah, when you discuss your overall Vision Road map and that's, I think that's a discussion, your staff will be queued up to answer all those questions.
Madam Chair, my recollection is that Angeline is required to put in a light at that location whenever that road comes through. That's my recollection, but staff can tell me if I'm wrong.
Look at that, the county engineer. Okay, well, that's not relevant here for today. Okay, and so, and so we're kinda trading height for a cut-through kind of here today in a way?
Well, I'm not sure you're, you're trading.
Right, but that's just...
Actually, we've capped our density and capped the, you know, the ask was, let's make it consistent with the urban service area. And we've capped it to four stories. We've capped the density to three, to 360 or 380, whatever my notes say there. So we're...
And you will not gate it? You cannot gate it?
It's clearly cannot be gated, so...
Any other question? Commissioner Waitman?
Sure, thank you. Mr. White, was it? So what's your, so y'all aren't gonna build any piece of this road?
We are not going to build any piece of your Vision Road. We are going to provide right-of-way towards your Vision Road. If you ever decide, once you all meet and decide that you, whether you want that Vision Road there or not, we are giving right-of-way towards that Vision Road.
So, okay.
And who decides where that right-of-way goes? Who's gonna decide that?
Cause right now, we, there's three options for how much right-of-way the county's gonna receive. That's what we saw.
Right, that we went through three options with staff. At their request, show us three different ways that this could align. And so we went through three different ways it could align. We agreed on the alignment that we agreed on, that's 30 feet of right-of-way from this project.
On this, what's shown on this map, is that the agreed alignment?
No, no.
Oh.
No, that's, that's the alignment of the Vision, Vision Road that impacts their project.
So...
That, yeah, that's, I can't see what you guys see, so...
The realignment is shown on one of Terry's prior slides. Terry had a slide...
The straight one to the traffic circle?
Okay, they're looking at the same thing, okay.
Thank you.
This, this stretch of road will be a, a pretty busy section, used, pretty regularly, I imagine. So who, who was discussing how, the three pricing options for the road? And those came from staff?
Yeah, it's in the agenda.
It's in your agenda, fact, yeah. We've worked on that with...
Yes, so, all right, I was, okay.
But I understand, Commissioner Waitman, today, the alignment that somebody drew through this person's property goes right through the middle of their property.
Yeah, so why is that, is that a mistake? An accident?
Well, it came after the fact.
Somebody drew a map, a line on a map. A staff person drew a line on a map and ultimately was adopted into your Vision Road. But it does go right through this person's property. So generally, that's not the easiest way. If you want to do condemnation, you can draw your lines wherever you want, but if you want to work with property owners and accommodate these types of roads, you usually don't put a road through the middle of their property. We, we've talked about that one that also down there, Bullock and Johnny Lane, does the same thing. It's the same thing we're trying to, to work out.
I didn't interrupt you, but, Carbal, so the similar issues happened down south on 41. At no fault to that property owner, the county arbitrarily decided to put a road through their property without their knowledge. This is another recent example of that. The entitlements are here. Because of that, this makes it a bit, I mean, it's a bit of a conundrum. They, they have the, what they can build, but yet we're saying we're putting a road and the, the left and right hands aren't communicating with each other here, no fault to the property owner on this. While there's other bigger pieces of this picture that, traffic-wise, we need to figure out. So I think we're all looking for what that answer is because they could go ahead and get to work and then we're out of, out of a road.
Cause I was, I was in these conversations, so I know exactly. Because I was, I was in these conversations, so I know exactly. The conundrum that you described is exactly why the county attorney's office and the county engineer worked with the applicant on an alternate alignment for the vision road. That skirts the edge of their property, which does not destroy their ability to build this project.
Is that this one? Because we weren't being shown this one before. This is not, okay.
No, what I was just going to add to that is that even though the vision roads are shown, it's, it's a point A to point B. How it meanders through the property can always be a subject of conversation. So it's not necessarily, we can say it's through the middle, but that's correct. That's just a line on a map when these play. I don't know when this was adopted, but again, those are negotiations that we have and we, we discuss those. How do you get from A to B? That's the important piece.
Why is this going over someone's house? Is that a mistake?
Like, do these, exactly to the chair's point, do these folks know that there's a potential road going right through their living room right now?
So this, this, I also asked this question at planning commission. We require the applicant to notify all these property owners that are, that are impacted by this new alignment. So they have all been noticed, yes. Isn't that right, Barbara?
Yes, they were all noticed and we made notice that the, we are relining the vision road. I would say, interestingly enough, when, when Angeline happened, this amendment that put Deerbrook through this property, or at least getting from point A to point B, because, because Mr. Carvalho is correct, that's, the vision roads are point A to point B, getting from Deerbrook to 52, how you get there. But when this was done, this, you updated your, you updated your vision roadmap to do this. It wasn't done through a public hearing notice with letters in connection with the Angeline rezoning and comp plan amendment was not noticed that way. Unlike the burden that we took, which David made me do, which is tell these neighbors that there's going to be a realignment of this vision road. So I did something that I had did to notify the neighbors that Angeline did not do to this property owner. When this change was made, because it was made as a comp plan amendment initiated by the county, when they updated their whole, their whole comp plan, vision roadmap in 2022. And that's why I said, look, ultimately, you, if what you want to do with this road, we've come up with a solution, working together, that allows the development of this property, allows for the, the vision road in the future to move forward. Ultimately, you guys can talk more about what you want to do with your vision road and have that conversation teed up. Because that would be a comp plan amendment in connection with an update to your, to your vision road maps, which you do. I mean, you do updates to your vision road maps often because we get these, they were lines on the map, then we talked development. What can we make work, both to make your vision roads work, because they are important, and also to make development work? And so that we ultimately, you don't have to buy, you know, the right of way from the middle of this property, which would basically be, you know, quite expensive because you're going to damage the whole property.
Okay, can I ask you a question on this? I, I see where it says vision roadway option A. And above that, there are three black boxes, and then there's another piece of land. Are those, from the three black boxes north, does, is that not part of this application?
That's correct.
So the, okay, so that's, so we have, the turn, the east-west road is not on the applicant's property at this point?
That's correct.
Why, why are we not, why are we turning so far north? Is it because there's a, a turn there on Shady Hills?
Well, and there's a curve there. You can see the curve there.
So I'm guessing maybe that makes that dangerous to access it on the curve? So, so we have to go to someone else's property who's not represented here today? But in the meantime, you would build a way for people to get through that goes through your development along that? Did that road that Terry showed mean anything to you, that vision road A, as far as your site plan?
It meant that I'm not here anymore and you can work with a domain attorney at some point.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that's not something that was done with you. That, that road means nothing. The layout of that road...
Was never done with that property owner.
Okay, so, because I was going by that was your road.
And they were never noticed, unlike the fact that we noticed the properties all around us regarding this vision road realignment.
All right, we have a problem. It's not this landowner's fault.
Madam Chair?
Come up with a workable solution that, yeah.
I'd say, I'm not comfortable, I'll tell you why. Like you just mentioned, safety, et cetera. I would love to give you the time, the need, to go devise this where we could have a roadway that would be seamlessly going through. Sidewalks on both sides, have your cuts where your buildings are, et cetera, to get your people to access in and out. But to have your people parking right on the edge of the street, think about that, whether it be horizontal parking or even side parking. I got traffic going both ways, might, might get busier later on, especially starting out with truck traffic coming in. It's a dangerous situation. I want to see it...
Like Main Street in Newport, R. T.?
I want to, I want to see it protected on both sides. Have your cuts where you need them, but we've got to have it, you can't have people backing out.
Our site can't accommodate that.
Well, you know, I really wish...
I think we were, I think actually staff and the engineer, they all worked out a, a good compromise that keeps us out of court. Keeps the vision road alive and we have work to do.
Provides for the connectivity that the code requires.
I think that's, for right now, I think they've worked out our only option personally. What else is there?
And the turn lanes on Shady Hills Road, of course.
Do we, do we know, maybe Nick, you can answer this, when, maybe when Shady Hills is going to be, about what year it's going to be widened?
Press down and hold.
The newbie.
Yeah, good afternoon. Nick, you're our county engineer. We don't have a project in our five-year CIP to widen this section of Shady Hills Boulevard. So I can only say it's not going to be widened in the next five years.
Madam Chair, could I just one more, one more comment? Which is that if we actually required the applicant to build a road, a true collector road through the project, we're going to have to give them a mobility fee credits under state law. So it would no longer be a free road. We'd be paying for it indirectly. There's no legal mechanism where we can force somebody to build a road and not give them credits.
Yeah, I think, I think you have, you guys have found the solution forward until we figure out how we're going to do the other. But there's got to be a connection.
So, Madam Chair, so David, how wide of a road do we need to for a two-lane road going back and forth with sidewalks on both sides? And not, not that we want it, but for them to go build it.
Yeah, I'm going to go to county engineer to answer that question. I believe the minimum width for a collector road is 60 or 70 feet.
I don't want to do a collector road. I just want to put a road that's going to go through. I want it to be their road. It runs through. How wide can a two-lane road be with the sidewalks on both sides?
But Commissioner, you, it's going to function as a collector. So that's, I mean, that's what you're talking about doing. So that's really the dimension you'd have to use. It's not, it's not a vision road, it's not, but they're local roads, there's subdivision collectors, there's, you know, so I...
It would be probably 60 or 70 feet, but Nick, can you confirm that?
If you're asking the minimum width of the facilities to allow for conveyance of people and cars, I'd say 33 feet. Two 11-foot travel lanes, two 5-foot sidewalks, two 6-inch curb and curves. The 11 plus 11 is 22, 32 plus the 6-inch curves on either side between the road and the sidewalk, 33. I mean, that's, that's not plating it as a right of way, that's not creating a road. That is just providing facilities that are suitable for travel by vehicles and pedestrians from one end to the other through the site.
So it's three feet different than what you've said. Well, you said we're doing 30 already? Now we're doing 30. If we do 33, we're good.
That's an issue, right? So there's travel ways, which you said 11 or 12? Yeah, so 11. So we have, our access ways have to be a certain width too. The issue is a configuration issue. It's an issue of whether we can have any parking and have our sidewalks on the other side of the parking adjacent. That, it's a configuration issue. And so if you can't configure your buildings, then you're constraining the site and that's what, it makes it unworkable. But that's why I'm saying if we have those travel lanes, the condition that says we have to have those travel lanes, we have to have bike, pad connectivity. How we design it up and to make it work, because we're trying to find something that works. Because if we just, if we don't find something that works, then we don't find something that works. But we're trying to accommodate to make something work. It's a configuration issue.
So if we can make it work, I'm okay to put some of the impact fees toward it to get the road to be safe. So that's going to take some time.
Why do you think that's not safe? I mean, there's roads like that over America. We have them all over Tampa Bay. Grand Boulevard, Main Street, Rangeland, Lake Blan, yeah.
If I could clarify, the 33 feet is the minimum width needed for those components. But I would have no objection to meandering the sidewalk to the back of on-street parking or parking spaces that would be accessed from the drive aisles, these two 11-foot travel lanes. So it, it doesn't mean that it has to be a continuous 33-foot wide typical section through the property. It just means that those are the minimum widths where all of those components are provided adjacent to one another.
Okay, all right. So the devil's going to be the details of the site plan.
Yes.
So we, we all want to meet with you when the site plan comes out.
I do concur with what your county engineer just said about the configuration.
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Years past, we've had sometimes approvals like a project like this, and it's probably been like 10, 15 years since we did it. But we asked of the site plan to come back to the board for final approval. And this one is such a sensitive thing, I think we should ask for that. Do you have any objection to that?
That's within your discretion. It's whether the, the applicant, I mean...
There's no standards to do that, so we basically wouldn't have an approval today.
What? No, we're...
We don't have any standards of reviewing a site plan at the board level. So, I mean, it's just, and it takes a long time to do that because I, we did, there, we had an old condition in the, the project at Ross and Little that required the site plan to come back. We had to get all the way through the site plan approval, so the staff reviewed it, took six months, and then it took three months to get to you all. So you're talking, you know, and then at the end, if you don't like, it's a really difficult thing to bring a site plan back to you guys. I lived it. It sounds good when you're at rezoning, let's just do that, but it's, it's very hard to do it.
Well, here's the problem. The people at Ross Lane, they're ticked off, period. They're unhappy because they were supposed to get a light there. They thought they were going to get a light there, and it didn't happen. Had we brought the site plan back, maybe they'd have got it.
Well, first of all, that project is, did contribute to making, to making the light there. The county is putting the light in. The county, regardless of that project, closed that access for the VA. So it was nothing to do with that developer. But I'm just saying, regard that, it has nothing to do with this at all. But what's saying, it sounds very easy to bring a site plan back, but I'm telling you, it is not that easy. And it, again, we're trying to work together and move this project forward. But all these things actually make a big difference in our success or failure here. So we'd ask that you not do that.
Well, how can we condition it with certain conditions in the site plan? Is there possi, is there any...
I wrote a condition that I think both your county attorney has said and your county engineer.
You're not going to build, I don't know that you can strengthen that condition anymore. I mean, unless you want to require specific infrastructure, but it kind of already does, so I...
Why don't we add what, what our county engineer said about the parking, whatever he said, did that make you more comfortable, Jack?
I would rather continue it for 30 days. I, I think there's a path forward here, but I don't want to put people in jeopardy. And if you don't want to wait for the site plan, you get time to look at it. I know you guys are pa, pa... I know you're already looking at the site plan already. You haven't fully devised it because of different things, but I think that's the way to go approach this here.
I'm just not sure our conversation will be much different, but I can ask my client.
If that's here on the 25th, I'm not here. So, I don't know what more we can change. What's, what's, do you guys have any opinions? I, I like the suggestion that Nick made.
That Nick's comments make me feel better about it. But the, the other piece to this, um, bigger picture, maybe. And after, after meeting, meeting with the Deerbrook CDD president, the way the road configuration is in Deerbrook, I mean, there's seven cul-de-sacs. I don't, it, it's perplexing to me that these are publicly owned roads. This whole community is set up as if it should be a gated community. And somehow the developer got the county to be on the hook for these roads, just the whole layout of, of Deerbrook. The C, the CDD president, if the, the members vote, I don't know what the rule is, but if they vote to take ownership of their community, that means they can have their roads and then they can gate.
This is an HOA, it's not a...
Or HOA, what, excuse me, the vernacular, which...
Well, the difference is you can convey it to another public entity. It's much more complicated to turn these back, back to being private. There are provisions to do that, but it's much more difficult.
So they could go back to the HOA, county attorney?
It's not, it's not just as simple as it would be with a CDD, which is why I made the statement that it, it's not a CDD.
We have a long way to go. I want to keep the board meeting moving.
I would just say that, look, regarding the Deerfield Lakes people, going to Dunkin' Donuts, go through their project. We are going to have an alternative and go through our project. So we're actually making the connectivity and the options, which is why you have a connectivity ordinance. So people have different options of way to move around. So, and again, it's, it is slated for, it could have have commercial, which again, people could be going all different directions. So I do think the solution by having more connectivity through our project would make their, it's much more direct.
It helps them, for sure.
I think the Deerfield Road project is a different conversation. Sort of meant by that, it's a bigger picture conversation in this area. Anyway, I'm, I'm more comfortable with Nick's way in on how this would work.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a suggestion, if you just took Barbara's condition and just said that the accessway has to be approved by the county engineer, Barbara, would that be acceptable to use without getting into the exact, exact design details?
Let me ask my county engineer, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So let me ask my county engineer. Can you do that? And I want to be in a situation where, not that you can approve it or not, I want this to be looked at as the, our engineer saying, and it's your own professional opinion, that you think it's going to be safe whatever gets designed. So not like whether they can do it or not. That'll be like a situation Happy Hill. I want to make sure that you say whether you think it's safe or not, not whether they can do it or not. I need to be very clear about that.
Safety should be first.
I need, I need it from you.
Nothing, I can't understand why this ends up being on consent.
Yeah, let's take a motion to continue.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve with the extra height to four stories with a, conditions listed by Barbara that staff has. David, do you want to state those?
It would be the same one that Barbara read earlier, but my suggestion, assuming Barbara's client agreed, was to just add that that accessway would have to be approved by the county engineer.
Okay, so with it, with...
With a mind to safety.
Barbara, was your client okay with that or not?
Tony? Better than the continuance, let's get it done.
I just think the, Mr. County Engineer, you did state that that accessway could have parking along the accessway. And then the sidewalks on the other side, whether it be parallel or vertical, right? Those were ways that we could do this, right?
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay, make a motion. Was that your motion?
Hang on. The way you described it, it seemed to me that you wanted to see the roadway and the sidewalks there for the best safety. Are you saying differently now that she's asked you the question the way she asked you?
I, I don't understand your question.
All right, so the roadway, I thought you had said that you wanted to see it at 33 feet wide. You could put the roadway going all the way through. You could move the sidewalk from one to, from one to the other, depending on the route you wanted to run it through the apartments. But I didn't understand you to say you thought the parking was safe along the roadway. Are you saying that you think that's safer? Or that it's safe?
I do think it's adequately safe to have on-street parking on this connector roadway.
Would your on-street parking be like a, alongside the roadway, horizontal? Or are you saying people can like pull in, pull out from right angles?
So I, I would be looking to the board to give me guidance on what you would be willing to accept. Both parallel and perpendicular parking spaces on a roadway connection of this type would be deemed adequately safe, in my professional opinion. But if you think one of them obstructs the usefulness of the connection to, to an extent that you would not like to see it occur, for example, no perpendicular parking spaces, that should be part of the motion.
I, I wouldn't do perpendicular, but the other two should be...
We can agree to that.
Horizontally, I'm okay with.
Okay, so we can agree to that. So we're back at this, you know, again, we...
You can't agree?
We cannot agree to that. We not, cannot agree to not...
Perpendicular? You would, what about angular or, what's it called?
It'd be parallel, I was trying to get to that word.
Parallel or angle, angled? That takes up less space.
I mean, you're trying to, to, we're, we're trying to accommodate the accessway and the pedestrian movement in a manner that we can develop our project. The more you change that... The more you change that, the more we can't be successful. And that's, that is the rub. But you've had your county engineer who said that the configuration, which I've said could happen, which would be the travel lanes, the adequate sized travel lanes, parking, whether it be whichever way the parking goes, and a sidewalk, he said that that's adequate for this type of interconnectivity. Again, we're doing interconnectivity by the code through this project. We are not doing a vision road, we're not doing a county collector road, we're not doing a road. Because those things, as David has said, you would need to pay for, and, and we'd have to be able to accommodate, which we can't accommodate. So, I mean, I think that's why I was satisfied of saying the county engineer can approve it, because he said that he's fine with different parking configuration, whether it be whichever way the parking is, he thinks that still provides the interconnectivity, so.
Madam Chair, I think it's, if I could-
Yeah.
So I think, I think it's that vertical parking coming in and out, I mean, you're going to have people going around that thing, maybe running the school, running here, running there. And I, I think it's just a dangerous scenario. I would rather work with you to go work on getting some impact fee credits, to go build this road in a safer way that would offset your costs and make it more feasible. And I don't, it would take, I don't know how long it would take to go, go through and look at it, but I would much rather do that than do it where I could, what a dangerous situation out there.
How many impact fees? What, what amount of impact fees is generated by?
1.5 million.
That's not going to build a road, right?
But it might be enough to offset their profitability to make it work, and thereby make it safer for our people. I'm willing to have the discussion to have it looked at.
It's about a 13 acre site here, so, I mean, it's not like we can put roads, 30, 33 foot roads, we have to try to accommodate with the development. That's the way we're providing the interconnectivity is with this development. It's a whole new discussion if we're trying to do a road for you all.
You were going to do 30 feet for us anyway, right?
I'm good with that.
Your vision road.
No, he hasn't made a motion, I, I-
No, I'm pulling the motion, I'm pulling the motion back, because I'm not, I'm not satisfied in the safety. I'd, I'd rather continue it and, and work this out, or bring the site black, site plan back to us.
I don't, I don't see what can change other than a court hearing, personally. So, we can't-
I would think we need to wait.
You want to wait?
I want to wait. 30 days or-
All right, I guess we're going to continue.
I want it to be done the right way, and I want it to be safe.
Yep, I agree, so, um, I make a motion to continue.
So, Madam Chair, if I could just clarif, give clarification, because we need to know what staff is going to do in the next 30 days.
I don't have any clue what-
If, if you, if you want, if you want the applicant to prepare a site plan that shows how this interconnectivity would work, that may be able to occur in 30 days, I've been to Barbara and her client, but, or I'm not sure if you're asking us to do that, or go back and try to negotiate an actual road deal, because they're two very different conversations.
I think, did I see Steve Henry here?
Yes.
I did. Can he, can you make any comments to this road with parking on it that makes Commissioner Mariano more comfortable? Do you mind?
Uh, no, Steve Henry, Lincoln Associate, 5023 West Lowell. I, I, and I agree with the county engineer, I think that this is, this is not a county collector roadway. It, it is an interconnect roadway that can be designed, whether it be parallel parking, 90 degree parking, can be designed safely to be able to accommodate the amount of traffic. We're not talking about 50,000 cars per day, we're talking about an interconnection that happens all the time within, you know, a, areas. So it can be done, it just needs to be done properly, making sure there's adequate site distance, those type of things. You can't put the parking on, on a tight curve, those type of things. But it can be designed to be safe, given the volume that we're talking about here. Again, this is just an interconnect, it is not a county collector roadway.
So when, when you talk about donating 30 feet of right-of-way, that would be on the left-hand side of your property for a future vision road that we would come in and build later as Angeline develops to the south?
That's correct.
So then we'd have both, your throughway and the vision road?
You have a solution that you-
And we'll take that 1 point whatever million dollars and put it towards the vision road when it's time to build that.
You have both solutions, is what I've offered, we've offered both solutions.
Right. That's, that's a good deal.
Through our project, as well as the solution of you ultimately can build a vision road, because we're giving you right-of-way for that, towards that. So you've kind of got both solutions that, and lets the project move forward.
And the other thing is that, you, you, the neighbors are talking about cut-through traffic and everything else. The reality is, if you don't do this and you wait for the vision road, that may, you got $10 million, you know, that may never happen, as opposed to this collector or this connector roadway can happen almost immediately, so that you get that relief today with the option of in the future to be able to do the vision road. So you get both, and you get that relief almost immediately.
And the apartment complex builder is not going to build something that's dangerous that gets him sued all the time, so I, I think he will want to build a safe road too. So I think we can move this through with the engineer taking a good look at it. And Commissioner Mariano, I would suggest you get a meeting, you know, maybe we're all going to ask you for a meeting. It doesn't have to be a meeting like this, but, you know, we're, but I'm co, I'm comfortable now, understanding everything. I really am.
Well, if we're going to go down this road, I want to be with the county engineer as we look at this thing through, and we discuss together what was, what's safe and what's not.
Okay, so let's throw out that other motion, let's make a new one, and second it, and let's move on. 321.
Move approval with the stated access, with a final approval of the county engineer, without, with his professional opinion, period, no other consideration needed to be done. Allowing the extra height to four stories, 360 unit max, allowing for, on Shady Hills Road, a left turn in and a right turn lane, D cell lane coming in on Shady Hills Road.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, so that's, your motion also incorporates the conditions that staff has proposed for this project, correct?
Correct.
Some of the things you said are already in the approval.
Okay, so we have motion to second?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I may, real quickly, I, I think there was also a conversation on non-gated community too.
Oh, yeah.
I, I read the condition into the, the record, and that condition is, the record is just adding on to it that it's the county engineer's approval.
Thank you, so, so to my motion as well to make sure, non, non-gated community as well.
Yeah, okay.
Clarifying the second, I heard two.
Okay.
All right.
Oakley.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. P. 38.
P. 38, I believe we've already read into the record the publication.
Go ahead, please.
Perfect. Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development, Economic Growth. Before you today is item PDE 257793. This is substantial amendment to the Prestine Lake Preserve Amputee, to amend the amputee to allow for a development of 7,500 square foot office building.
Could you clarify the file number again?
Could, could you repeat that, I couldn't hear you.
Could you clarify the file that you just read into the record? PDE 25-
7799.
Okay, that's not what I heard. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Here's the rough location of the subject site, just off of Aaron Cut Off. This proposal is to add the additional 7,500 square foot office building into the existing amputee, which has 120 built, single-family detached units, roughly 0.77 acres. Here's the aerial location map showing those built, single-family detached, as well as the portion, 0.77 acres, that will be 7,500 square feet of office, which is nestled along Aaron Cut Off. Here's that zoning map reflecting amputee. Future land use, which is res 3 on the 0.77 acres in question. Here is a context map showing parcel 2, that'll be the 7,500 square feet of office, the existing amputee, as well as the surrounding area showing the Dupree Preserves Amputee, as well as Magnolia Point and Aaron Cut Off. Here's the amputee master plan. In red, you can see delineated that 0.77 acres along Aaron Cut Off, that's going to be the 7,500 square feet of office. This is the conceptual plan provided by the applicant, showing a two-story office building, associated parking and stormwater infrastructure. I'm here for, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from both the Planning Commission and Planning Development and Economic Growth. I'm here for any questions.
Is the applicant here? Oh, boy.
Barbara Willhite, 8627 Grand Boulevard.
Okay, and this was pulled off the consent by Commissioner, or because we have public opposition?
Public, yeah, and I don't really know what the comment is, but I'm just, I'll be very, very brief.
Okay.
Just to give you a little bit of history here, because I represented this project for a long time. When this project was first approved, it was approved with its only access off of Fletcher Road. Folks on Fletcher Road really weren't happy about that, the client committed to trying to get additional property, to have access off of Aaron, so we came back and we've got ac, we did this project, the residential project, off of Aaron. In getting that property off of Aaron, there was additional uplands that at that time, we didn't put any use on it, because again, we already had a residential project that we were just providing additional access to, so it'd be off of Aaron and not off of Fletcher, because that caused a lot of concern. So here we are with an upland piece of property, that's perfect for a daycare, a community-serving office. We're coming back and, and just adding a use to that parcel, so it just doesn't sit vacant. And I think it's a pretty good, pretty good thing for the county and for the community, because it'll be, it'll be local serving, so I'm not sure ultimately what the issue is, but I just want to give you a little bit of background, that that's how this parcel came to be.
Okay. Um, so, we have someone in the audience who wished to speak to this item. And if there's anyone else, just because we're running late, please line up behind, if this, okay, this is the only speaker. Anyone online?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Hamilton, 15114 Wind Whisper Drive, Odessa, 33556.
Yes.
I did swear in. Just reading this without the additional information given, I don't understand why you would take a preserve, which is a, by definition, a protected area of land that includes a lake and has managed to preserve the natural resources and wildlife. I don't understand why you would take that away and let them build an office space without really knowing what it's going to be yet, just to take up beautiful land. People want to live in communities that are, have, I just think it's a shame, sorry, this is my first time public speaking.
Okay.
But I just, we moved out to Pasco County a year and a half ago, and there has been so much change in that year and a half, and there's something constantly being built, and the beauty and the reason why people move here and want to live here, I feel like is slowly being taken away, and I think it's a shame. I think it could be put somewhere else in a building that's already built, that has been no longer used, can be repurposed. I just don't think it's necessary to take a preserve piece of land.
That was the name of the project, it's not designated a preserve.
There is a preserve nearby, it's called Connor Preserve. That's the preserve.
This is all very confusing.
This is some, I know, this is someone's private land, and they have the legal right to develop it, so.
Okay.
But we do-
Now that that has all been stated, and now I know that.
Yeah, that's okay, it's, it's confusing when the, it's called a preserve, so, no worries. Okay, so I guess we're, yeah. Any other-
Barbara, did you ju, choose the name of this project? I said, did you choose the name of the project?
What is the name of the project again?
Prestine Lake Preserve Amputee.
Oh, okay, yeah. That can be confusing when you call a neighborhood a preserve. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, P. 39.
P. 39, we have proof of publication in the January 8th edition of the Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by affidavits of certified mailing and site postings.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development, Economic Growth, item P. 39, PDE 757831, or 25. Before I proceed, I'd like to enter an ex parte into the record for the clerk's office.
Do we need a motion for that? No. For ex parte?
First filing.
Yeah. Anything for me?
We've got a bunch.
We good now? Now you're all good, appreciate it. This is a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential to Master Plan Unit Development Amputee to allow for the maximum development of 63 single-family detached homes and associated infrastructure on 34.24 acres just south of Hudson Avenue. Here's the location map, south of Hudson Avenue. Like I mentioned before, this is for 63 single-family detached, with the minimum lot size of 60 feet by 120, and associated infrastructure on that 34 acres in the northwest of Pasco County, in the North Market area. Here is the location map, just south of Hudson Avenue, extends down to Foxfire Drive. The existing zoning showing AR Agricultural Residential, and the future land use map, showing res 3. Here's a context map of the location of this amputee. Just to the east, we have the Palmwind Amputee that was approved about a year, year and a half ago for 319 single-family homes that extends all the way down to Sheek's Road from the nor, or from the south, all the way up to Hudson Avenue. And this shows Firefox Drive and the current end of Colony Road. This amputee with this master plan will be constructing a two-lane segment of the future Colony Road to their project access, and then dedicating the rest down to the southern boundary, as well as dedicating right-of-way for a connection from the Palmwind Amputee that can be, that can be seen on the arrow there on the bottom where the right-of-way for Colony Road extends south. A couple of things with the, the binding conceptual plan on this one. Staff worked with the applicant to ensure proper pedestrian circulation throughout this project. It is faint to see, but the applicant did provide a pedestrian interconnect to the northwest, as well as to the west, in lieu of vehicular connections, as they're seeking a variation from 901601, street design and dedication requirements. Those pedestrian interconnects flow through the entirety of the project as it's currently laid out, to ensure proper pedestrian circulation for if and when those pieces of land are ultimately developed.
Can you point to those?
Yeah, I can't see them on the map.
Certainly. Sorry, the, uh, my pointer's not working.
It's not working, sorry.
Do you mind, will you drag the mouse over there for him?
Yeah, wherever you want.
Double click it? Let me go back. Sorry about that. Apologies. All right, you be my driver. So, along that western edge where there's the, the curve in the road, so the sidewalk comes in along the street, and then there's actually a gap there in between two homes? No, no. So follow that south, and now through, up. No, no.
Why don't you take the mouse?
Can I, can I use my mouse? Mr. Seiverson, will you please point out those pedestrian connections? Okay, perfect. So, current, now trace, trace your arrow up along that road, up Colony, and then right there, stop, go down. The sidewalk will extend there, off the road, to a pedestrian connection to that parcel if it's developed, which will then be at the corner of Colony and Hudson, so it will be a prime redevelopment portion at the, the corner of those two roads, but it will also extend north up Colony Road. And now, Mr. Seiverson, please show us the-
Is that wider than five feet? Is that a multi-use, or a five-foot sidewalk, which is one person and a dog? Not two people walking side by side?
So let me just- Do you mind, Madam Chair?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, so you're telling me the sidewalk goes up to, kind of with a black line stops and comes back down, it doesn't go all the way up to Hudson Avenue?
No, it, it does both. It, it diverges in, in sort of a forking method, one going to provide the connection to that property, but- One, going to provide the connection to that property, but also continuing north up to Hudson Avenue.
So the direct connection all the way to Hudson Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then it also goes in between, there's that corner lot there, thank you Kurt. The sidewalk will also come off of that road in another forking manner to provide an interconnect to that property just to the west, and then also continue along the regular residential pattern for if that property's developed. The reason a vehicular interconnect wasn't provided there, there's a significant elevation grade change that didn't permit vehicular access. It wouldn't have been safe, but a pedestrian access would be feasible. These are the exhibits for the Colony Road improvement, that hatched lining showing the portion of the road that's going to be constructed by the applicant for their project access. It's going to be the two lanes of the ultimate 124-foot segment that was approved by the PDNE, by the Board of County Commissioners some years ago, as well as the rest of the dedication of the 124 feet down to the southern property line. That pond that's highlighted up at the corner of Hudson, yes. That pond is roughly .86 acres, and that is creditable as it's going to be holding water from Hudson Avenue and this vision road. The rest of the pond sites aren't credible. Like I mentioned before, the variation from 9016011, street design and dedication requirements, in lieu of those vehicular connections to the west, we provided enhanced pedestrian mobility in lieu of that connection, as well as a variation from 9012I, which I just spoke to. Originally, this was expected to be 160 feet of right-of-way for Colony Road. After a PDNE study was approved by the Board of County Commissioners, it was determined it needed to be reduced to 124 feet. And this is consistent with that BCC route study for 124 feet of an urban cross-section.
Can I, may I ask a question? What is enhanced pedestrian versus regular pedestrian?
Enhanced as in, they originally weren't going to provide the pedestrian connections to the west because of their pattern of their residential layout, as well as to the northwest. When staff was in the negotiation process of the MPUD, initially, we wanted full vehicular connections to the west per the code 9016011. Weighing the elevation different constraints, staff decided that if a pedestrian connection was provided there, that we were amenable to their variation from the code from a full vehicular access.
I gotta look it up. Okay, does have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Do you all have my PowerPoint presentation?
Any motion for that?
Yes, if you would receive and file this PowerPoint.
Move, receive, and file.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Don't have the number anymore. What number?
Oh, it's for 39. I got it, I got it.
Thank you. Staff did a very good job going through the details, so let me kind of just highlight a few things. I mean, you can see our project here on Hudson Avenue. We always know where the schools are is important, so we've measured, we've measured how far they are. They're more than two miles. Our kids will be bused to those schools. This is the site plan, which William showed you, showing, we did quite a bit of work. This one took work as well because we have a vision road coming through. So we worked with the county engineer and the county attorney's office on ultimately how we're going to design Colony Road. There was a difference between your right-of-way tables and your adopted PDNE. So we're using the section from the PDNE, which is a little different from your tables, but the PDNE is more specific than your tables. We will be doing Colony Road, our portion from Hudson Avenue to our entrance, and then donating the rest of the right-of-way. We will also, there's also a little sliver, which David Goldstein caught at Planning Commission to make sure that Palm Winds, which is to our east, can connect to future Colony Roads. So we actually have a little bit of extra right-of-way that we're going to convey as well so that Palm Winds can have connectivity to Colony Road. Ultimately, the land use in this is, for this property is Res 3. This whole area is Res 3, which allows a maximum of 102 units. We are proposing 63. Current zoning is 34. We are also proposing 60 by 120-foot lots. Those are 7200 square-foot lots. Your R4 district, which is your most dense district of the Quiddian District, are 6,000 square-foot lots. Ultimately, again, talking about this area in context of developing, the development and the growth in this area, you put a vision road in, which means you're looking to have growth. You have a Res 3 land use in all of this area and central water and sewer. In context, in June of 2023, this board approved the Palm Winds MPUD, which you can see our project, how it complements. The Palm Winds MPUD has 40 and 50-foot lots, 313 of them. Their gross acreage is 2.67 dwellings per acre. To complement that, we are proposing 60 by 120-foot lots here at 1.8 dwellings per acre. So we thought it'd be important to see how the two projects fit. We will be providing a housing type that's not being provided over at Palm Winds. This is DRB. The client is DRB, and they, these are their elevations of some of their products. We included this because I think you'll find these products to be, you know... What they call these, I think, step-up, the 60-foot lots, the 7200 square-foot lots, and this is the step-up renderings. And with that, I know there's some public comment ultimately. I would tell you that one of the things that probably will come up, which maybe we'll just talk about now, is that we have provided the interconnectivity that's required by the code from our project to Foxfire Drive. Foxfire Drive is a standard county-maintained road, meeting your minimum standard requirements. Got asked a lot about this at Planning Commission. And I ultimately, my answer is that your code says it. I get asked about it all the time, obviously. We just talked about connectivity for a while there. And that the reason why we have connectivity to Foxfire is that your code requires it. So it's 901.6. D. 11. It allows for additional traffic circulation, additional way for traffic that's coming from the south. They don't have to go down Foxfire and then go over to Peachtree Road. They ultimately will be able to come through our project, providing different ways to get to Hudson Avenue, which is what your code's encouraging. And that's why we have the connectivity to Foxfire Drive.
I have a couple of questions. Does anyone else? Who, is this the road section designed by Margaret? Who designed this road section? I'm just curious.
It was ultimately a consultant for the PDNE.
I'm just trying to understand, a five-foot sidewalk and two eight-foot bike lanes. And we had this debate at the TMA. I like to cycle, but I don't cycle with traffic. I know some dedicated cyclists prefer the road to the sidewalk, but if... But I sure wouldn't let any of my kids ride in the road. So why are we devoting so much to the road and not enough to a multi-use path? Even three feet more on the multi-use path.
That's you, Mr. County Engineer.
Madam Chair, the typical section, actually, that was shown in the route study that was approved by the board in 2002 differs slightly from what's on the screen, but I agree with you.
Can we adjust this? I mean, this isn't her, right? She's not building, are you building this road?
We're building a portion of it.
Well, then I definitely want to discuss this because this is not the road we should be building. If this was, we designed this in 2002. It's not right. And I don't even understand some of this, so can we... I don't want to hold up your project, but we certainly can do better on the road, right?
Can we have our engineer come up and talk engineering?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you're bringing that point out. It's a great, great pickup. Because I think if you were able to build that road a little narrower, you'd get more of that road coming down to possibly make that connection sooner than later.
Well, maybe, but certainly that isn't the road scape that we should be building.
Trent Stevenson, Level Up Consulting, 505 East Jackson, Tampa, Florida. I have been sworn. Uh, this is the half section, so we're only building the western side, so...
It's four lanes, divided?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Oh, wow.
So we're only building the west side.
But still, it's kind of big.
On the east side, there will be a multi-use path when you guys come in and build the ultimate section. There will be another multi-use path.
Okay, so this is a big road, like Little or... Okay, I have no idea.
So what we, what we agreed with Nick when we went through our negotiation is the, because we're, it only, is only going to be a two-lane road until the ultimate build-out, we are adding an extra bike lane. So both directions will have bike lanes. That bike lane on the east side will be demoed when you come in and build the ultimate additional two lanes.
But I still wonder if we need this wide of a road section. And this is the debate we were having in VOPH, right? This is a really wide road.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yeah.
So I think there's actually a mistake in the graphic. The typical section that was approved in 2002 had five-foot sidewalks, four-foot bike lanes, and 12-foot travel lanes. I think what they're now showing is, I think they've mislabeled the bike lanes as eight feet instead of four. And they're showing a reduction from the travel lanes that were approved in the route study in 2002, from 12 to 11. Honestly, I would love to have a more protracted discussion with the board about what the typical sections should be that we are typically, that we're going to construct on our vision road network. There's a 2019 resolution that the board adopted at that time directing my predecessor to build roads with on-street bike lanes every time we touched a road. And then a 12-foot path on one side and a five-foot path on the other side. If the board wants to revisit that, we can certainly bring alternatives back for consideration. They do have implications with respect to comprehensive planning because we establish a footprint for our vision road network based on the components of the road that we expect to construct.
What is the two, what is the six-foot offset? What is that?
That's just green space.
And then we have nine-foot of green space, so we have 15 feet. Not that I, I love my tree, you know, this is going to have oak trees going downsides. It's going to be a beautiful road, but do we need both of those green spaces?
So real quick, to clarify, the bike lanes are actually, per your detail, five feet?
Oh, well, it says eight foot here.
That's it. On our binding plan, we show the correct, I don't know which one that is on the slide. The, and again, the, your stabilize, the, you know, the greens, that's the detail from your ultimate build-out as far as the...
Well, how can we move this forward but fix, you know, work on that? What's, what would be your recommendation from staff?
If the board doesn't want this facility to be constructed with on-street bike lanes, then we can narrow the roadway surface to just include the two-foot curbing gutter on the left, two 11-foot travel lanes, stabilized shoulder on the right, and put the additional impervious area into the pathway on the west side. Make that either a 10 or a 12-foot pathway on the west side.
If this is a main, you know, and if that can, you know, meander a little through that green space, that's better. That'd be beautiful.
Start a meandering.
Our team is fine with, with the cross-section that you guys are talking about. Ultimately, it's your, it's your road.
Yeah.
It's your cross-section.
I don't want to be tearing it up.
As long as we're not proposing anything that's going to cost them more, which I don't think it will.
No, I think we're talking about potentially less.
We're fine with, ultimately, if you approve this, that we have a condition that, or part of your motion that says, that you're approving the cross-section as approved by the county engineer, and then we'll just fix the paperwork before it's executed. So we're flexible because it is your road, and we respect that.
You know, I, I think that we should approve it with the conditions that we, we don't have to figure out what our roads look like right, right here, right now. I don't think we should. But let's approve it with the conditions that we work on with our engineering and our staff.
We'll come up with something for condition.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to this item?
We have numerous signed up. Mr. Nguyen?
Good afternoon, elected officials. Clinton Nguyen, 12709 Nguyen Lane in Hudson. From this map, it looks like invisible vision roads, not vision roads. I've got some bullet points here, but our roads, Ms. Starkey, are really important. So having a plan now before we do this is important. I'm going to try and get through my notes. I'm not sure what Ms. Willhite was saying, that she's not sure how Sackelson is going to complement Palm Wind. You guys cram Palm Wind through to Fair Winds. There were three different hearings. On the third and final hearing, you guys did not allow public comment. You went back, you delayed this 90 days. You opened up in the Fair Winds where we have no sidewalks. We have mothers and fathers walking their kids in the mud to the school bus. We have no infrastructure. We have fatalities at Colony and 52. We have Fair Winds now connected through to Colony. Bumper to bumper, no light, no street signs, nothing. You guys do a field trip and come to our neighborhood and see how it is. So I have a question about that. As you can tell, I'm pretty heated. When Palm Wind was originally approved, it was approved for 305 homes, but now it was 319? Where did that change? And who did that? There's 22 homes right now there. What I want to know is how the Showman property is being rezoned ag into this development. This is a place called Shady Oaks Ranches, and it's comprised of 30 properties that are agricultural. These families have invested. They have homes, they have animals, and this is going to affect code enforcement big time. So now do we have to now not be able to shoot, not be able to clean, work out there on our property, have a bonfire? I was silenced by the county to do a burn on my ag land because of the new development. So if there's ever a bonfire from some of the neighbors and it spreads through my pine tree forest, am I now liable? That's unacceptable. I'm doing all my property to preserve my agricultural heritage here. I'm requesting a 90-day table of this because I think you owe it to the residents of Peachtree, Foxfire, and Colony Road. Colony Road is a major issue, guys. We all know it. And then this is an invisible road. Colony Road needs to be handled by the builders, not by the taxpayer or anything else. So all this development that you're bringing in there, we're not properly planning. And I'm going to keep complaining on all my committees, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. I also go to all your meetings, the 2050 plan. I think that's just a pileup, you know what? Because I go, I draw little trees on all the pastures, I draw little animals, all the things you guys tell us to do as citizens. We put our time in, and it's ignored. So I know I come up here hostile. I'm not against development, so understand that. I want proper infrastructure. Thank you.
Ms. Kuzmeric? Marcia Kuzmeric?
Marcia Kuzmeric, aye. I live on 11908 Foxfire Drive, and I am the property...
You were sworn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all, you just needed to say that.
I live directly across from where their entrance on Foxfire, and it is Foxfire for the record, not Firefox. I raise sheep, milk sheep. We also raise dairy goats. And them being a housing development right across the street, especially two-story homes, they're going to be seeing on the property all kinds of things. And yes, we do have bonfires. I open up for 4-H clubs. This is really going to affect our lifestyles. I didn't buy into a neighborhood into a subdivision. I didn't buy into a neighborhood into a subdivision per se, but it's being brought to my doorstep, literally to my doorstep. Our properties are parallel. They're probably exactly across the street. I've got kids that go to the bus stop. My son almost got hit two weeks ago because of the traffic already. Because you opened up, what is that neighborhood called? Not Shadow Ridge, Meadow Oaks onto Fair Winds. Now they come over and they, they're going to go to Hudson Avenue, so obviously they come up Colony Road, Foxfire to Peach, the traffic, it's already there. Just from opening up, and I don't even, oh, I think that was opened up maybe three years ago, and then I heard about the Palm. I know, I'm not sure if I have that proper neighborhood that y'all have been talking about, Palm Winds or something. That comes all the way from Hudson Avenue to Fair Winds. So obviously, there's more and more traffic, and now you're going to have an entrance from a subdivision right directly on Foxfire Drive. So there's two main topics, is the traffic. My children aren't safe for walking. God forbid if one of my goats or sheep get out there or dogs. How many people are going to stick their hands over? I've got horses. I can't even go horseback riding anymore. I bought out there because we did go horseback riding. There used to be places to go, and now there's nowhere. I don't dare to go out there with the horses because you have all these cars, and do they go around you? No, they only go around the school buses. The school buses are going too slow, and the road's not wide enough legally to pass, in my opinion. So that makes for dangerous. And I've been there 25 years. When I first moved there, we did go riding down the road, and it was nice.
Thank you very much. Your, I'm sorry, I didn't see your, your buzzer go off. Next.
Next up would be Joelle Neri.
Joelle Neri, 12413 Hudson Avenue, and yes, I was sworn in. I'm here representing the Angelus. We are just north of this property build, actually just north of Palm Winds. But Palm Winds and this are both affecting the traffic patterns in our area. I am concerned about the infrastructure and not being able to support the traffic that this will add. We have a bus stop literally outside our property. There is one little boy that gets picked up on that blind corner on the S-turn, and I am concerned every day for him. I don't think that we have the infrastructure to support even more without a full study of some kind because this is getting crazy. Traffic is getting busy, it's getting insane. It is dangerous for students walking, for everything. And yes, we bought in a rural area. We have 17 acres. We're rural, our neighbors are rural, and now it's not being that way anymore. And I know people are building, and I know people are coming into the community, and that's great for support, but I am concerned over the infrastructure for the whole area just because of these traffic patterns. There's no lights, there's no sidewalk on Hudson Avenue, and that's just the north side. And I know you're talking about further south, but it's going to be coming north, and that is our concern, not only for the community, but my residents. Because my residents are all in wheelchairs, and that is an issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the great work your family does, too.
Rivas Johns.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you very much for, for hearing this. Rivas Johns, 11934 Foxfire Drive. I'd like to start off by saying, you know, I had a lot to say, a lot of notes, but after sitting here.
You were sworn?
I'm sorry?
You were sworn in, right?
Yes, I was.
He's been here all day.
Pretty much. And after hearing what, what's been going on in this meeting for the last few days, it's actually, I mean, excuse me, the last few hours, it's, it's been concerning to see how many places that Ms. Will Height is actually over or looking over to for the county. And, well, I guess I'd like to get to, in the 2050-year plan, Colony Road is set, slated to run all the way through to Hudson. Now, with that being said, I've been living in that spot that I built my house on three acres for 15 years. And when I bought it until right now, you must have one acre or more to build in Shady Oaks Ranches. With them buying that piece of parcel that connects into Shady Oaks Ranches is a violation as far as I'm concerned because now you're taking away the credibility of our one-acre and up plots, which is losing value to our houses and our property. Now, with that being said, in the 2050-year plan, I was going to build another house on the other side of my property, but permitting wouldn't allow me to pull permits for the simple fact that I was in the 2050-year land, uh, plan for Colony Road. Now, with that being said, I see all these buildings going around me that the permitting and the board is allowing to build, but yet they won't let me build anything on my property because that roadway's in a 2050-year plan. Now, if you actually look where the road comes out, the only thing that they're going to do is from out their subdivision and up to Hudson Avenue. There's another way. They didn't have to try to have this piece of property built. They could have ran straight across and ran as a second outlet to the road that they're showing there that is not even a road, it's just a connection. That is about, mm, I'd say a little more than 500 yards, that they could tie into Colony Road and make that an easier pathway straight to Hudson Avenue like is in the 2050-year plan, instead of running everybody through our neighborhood. We already have a hard time getting in and out. The traffic is ridiculous, and the subdivisions are not even done yet. You're talking 13, 1,300 houses and possibly more because there's more subdivisions around us that have already been proved, approved, and it's, it's just absolutely ridiculous. And the traffic's getting worse and worse. Every time a car or a big truck goes by my house, everything in the house shakes, you know? And, and, you know, you guys have a plan, a vision, 2050, but you don't stick to it. You inconvenience everybody else. Thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. So you're on the corner of Foxfire and Colony?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I just looked at. My property winds up with the entrance where it comes out of that property.
Okay, thank you.
Bridget Erickson is the next one signed up.
Hi, my name is Bridget Erickson. I live at 11931 Foxfire Drive. I have been sworn in. I have horses, so I'm concerned about changing it from ACT to MPUD. Secondly, I live, may I approach this map right here?
She's, she's.
You see this little gray spot right there? Colony goes like that. That's my house. I live there.
You, you need to stay at the mic or you're just.
That protective plan goes right through my living room. I've lived there for 18 years. I'm a Florida resident. I've been in Pasco County over 35 years. I've invested my time, my blood, my sweat and tears in that property with my horses. I built my stalls, I built my pole barn, I live there. My family's lived here. My son goes to high, went to high school here. I have grandchildren here. And now you're talking about all these pretty little sidewalks and about the bicyclists for new people. What about the people that have lived in Pasco County that have been paying taxes for all the time that we've lived here? What about the people that have contributed to Pasco County? You're pushing us out to bring new people in, and it's not fair to all of us. Where's the give, where's this give and take here? You're taking, taking, taking from Pasco County residents, but you're not giving us anything back. And again, main point, that's my home. You got it going right through my living room. That's not going to happen. You cannot take my livelihood. You can't take my life away. You can't take my home away. This needs to be reconstructed, redone, and it needs to be re-looked at so they can plan another way. They can go Colony Road straight up. Why do they have to go through a corner like that? Why do you have to go through my land? Why do you have to go through my living room? Why can't you just go straight up? I mean, I don't care about your sidewalks. I don't care about your little ponds. I don't care about how big a sidewalk is. I care about, that's where I live and sleep and reside. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
That's all we have signed up in advance.
Come on up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? If so, please get in line.
May I speak?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Riffey. I'm with 1346 White Walnut Street, and I have been sworn in.
What, what's the visa? White Walnut?
Yes, White Walnut Street.
Okay.
Mr. Mariano, you and I spoke when you came to my station on this month of the 13th, and you said, you know, well, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get those people together. But I do have approximately 30 people here who feel the same way, but they're hard-working people like me, and they just can't be here because they're, they're doing their jobs. I moved here for the greenery. I'm okay with building, but when you start pushing out animals and you create safety issues, just like last, I think it was November last year, headed to work, and all of a sudden, what do I see? I see a child who struck at a bus stop. And why? Well, he was fatally injured because people are going around trying to avoid these traffic lights. They're going through our subdivisions, and they're speeding, they're not paying attention, and struck him and killed him. The pedestrian traffic, I run these calls every day. Nobody else runs these calls. I see these calls. Pedestrians are hit more often than you would know. But when we start pushing out wildlife, you know, we have the sandhill cranes. If you see two sandhill cranes together, they're like a married couple. They will mate for life. So then when you see one just walking around all lonely because it will no longer mate for life because they're being wiped out. The gopher tortoises, they create homes for 350 other species of animals. And what do we do? We put concrete on top of them, and it takes them about a year to die. So they pretty much starve to death. We got migrating birds. We have deer, raccoons, all being killed. There's, even talk about a black wolf. Look up a black wolf. Apparently, it was extinct for about 100 years, but now we're saying we're seeing them in our areas because they got nowhere else to go. NOx gases, all these extra vehicles are creating extra pollution that we're sitting in, in traffic. You know, I was just in Belgium, and people there cough nonstop because of all the NOx gases coming out of our vehicles. What are NOx gases? Nitric oxide and nitrogen dioxide. Are these the things that are causing cancer as we sit in them and US-19 as we can go along or get anywhere? Smog and acetyrene come from those two things. Infrastructure, US-19, I can't do it anymore. Get my kids every day from Tarpon Springs, which I'm already late getting them because I'm here to speak for everybody who cannot be here. 52 is still two lanes, yet we're worried about all this other stuff. You know, what about our water, our power? You know, nobody's thinking about our, you know, people like me, right now, you know, I got a septic tank that won't drain because all this increased building is pushing it more towards me. You guys are elevating your lands, you have the money to do that, I don't. What happens, you know, in a state of emergency when we need to get out of here? How the hell are everybody going to evacuate this area when these roads are deadlocked, you know, trying to get anywhere? And what happens with people like me, as everyone already mentioned, you know, we want to go shoot, we want to have our cows, our horses, have our kids, have what I had, you know, years of having land. Our kids are on phones all day instead of being out in nature. That's what they want to do, and everyone's pushing towards that. That's not what I want. I don't want to see, you know, these houses packed together and then creates all these issues, like, just like last time I tried to get food with all these extra people here, the food just sells out even quicker. I don't know when we're going to stop bulldozing. We need to start preserving our, our resources. That's just me.
Thank you. Okay, this is our last speaker today. Is there anyone online?
Not for this item.
Okay.
Hi, Pastor Jen, Carowack, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Stone Hill, Florida. And some of these folks have come to the Shady Hills Civic Association meeting, so I felt it important to just advocate, you know, for their position and just in that I know that most everyone knows of the golden rule, do unto those that, as you would have done to yourself. And it sounds as if maybe one of the neighbors is not being as great of a neighbor. Those with more land are not more important than those that don't have as much land. The neighbors should be equally, and, you know, I just, most of these projects, the reason why people come and just are concerned, and those that are concerned and can attend because they're working, is because, you know, they don't know necessarily the intricacies they, maybe there are things that could be worked out, and then we spend time here, you know, trying to advocate for a position that maybe otherwise would have been worked out. I understand not every situation requires a neighborhood meeting, but like, come on, let's be a good neighbor. As the gentleman said, Ms. Will Height advocates for many landowners, you know, and, and there are like a few that likewise, as Ms. Will Height, I mean, have a neighborhood meeting, meet with the folks around you, let them know, see if there's something that, you know, could be advocated. And I ask that you as, as the leaders in this county, that you would ask the same, that, that they begin to try and advocate and collaborate in a positive way so that, you know, we can be, still remain a good community in Florida.
Okay, to the applicant. And I have a question on the vision road, I guess.
Yeah, me too. I have a comment.
Barbara Will Height for the applicant. I understand the speaker and the person owns the home and the vision road is, those are decisions, hard decisions you have to make when you set out where you want vision roads, and then you do a PDNE, and the PDNEs that you do weigh out where to get the right of way.
Make sure, make sure everyone knows what a PDNE is, because there's people that don't know what that is.
I know it's PDNE, but what's the proper name?
It's an F.D.O.T. term. It's Project Development and Environmental Study. And what we do in the.
That a route study, the same?
A route study is choosing the alignment of a road, excuse me, and the drainage facility locations so that we can actually construct the network needed to move people around.
Okay, thank you.
So ultimately, there's a process you guys go through, and then ultimately, there's public hearings on that vision road. And so we, we are, been asked to accommodate your road, and so that's what we're doing. That's why Colony Road is on our property. Would my client probably like to develop the whole thing and push the road on somebody else's property? Sure. I mean, that might be the thing. But no, we, we are accommodating the road. We were asked to accommodate the road. Your PDNE asks us to accommodate the road. So that's how the road came to be. We didn't choose the alignment, we didn't even choose the cross-section. We obviously are going to work on a better cross-section. I think one of the things you have to have perspective is that this property, since 1989, has all been approved by the county as residential three. It's a suburban density, three units per acre.
Say that again?
Three units per acre is your land use designation for this, for this area. It's not just this property. I mean, it's all south of Hudson Avenue, it's, it's res three. So when you talk about, did we, did we look at the community we're coming to? We did. Res three allows 102 units. Next door, you approved Palm Winds with 40 and 50-foot lots. We didn't come and propose 40 and 50-foot lots. We didn't come and propose 6,000-square-foot lots, which are your R4 district. We didn't come and propose an R4 district without conditions. We came forward as an MPUD to exceed your R4 district. And we did that because the client was committed to a quality project and all of your standards regarding architectural standards and the things that you like to see in MPUDs, that if I would have come as an R4 with 6,000-square-foot lots, it would just been your zoning district. So Pastor Jen and, I guess they know me by name now, you know, I grew up in this community as well and care about it, but when we look at a place where we're going to bring a project, where I look at with my clients, we actually look at where we're bringing that project. And that's why we're bringing forward 63, three units instead of 102. That's why we're bringing forward 60 by 120-foot lots, 7,200 square feet instead of 4,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet, or even your code that says 6,000 square feet. Where you have central water and sewer, where you make those investments in central water and sewer is where your growth is ultimately going to go. Again, the connection to, to Foxfire is a code requirement so that you have different connectivity, people can travel different ways, that's why it's there. I would add that, you know, Commissioner Mariano did mention, when I spoke to him, like, could there be a disclosure, a written disclosure for our residents that they can appreciate that there are surrounding residents that have an agricultural lifestyle? And I did prepare a condition, and I did run it by, it's been such a long day, I did run it by Mr. Goldstein and staff, that we could add to a disclosure. So there is that mutual, our residents know that there are neighbors that have an agricultural lifestyle. So I'm going to pass this out.
Take a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
With regard to wildlife, we do wildlife surveys, and gopher tortoises are no longer allowed to be just mitigated on site. You have to move them. Quite a process to do that, quite an expense to clients to do that. But they cannot put concrete on them and suffocate them. They have to be moved. And again, we have to do all the wildlife surveys, and we have to do them multiple times. We have to do them with the MPUD. We have to do them again at Plumbery Plan. They're only good for eighteen months. And then, even after that, when we go out to actually start development, your staff goes out again. And if any gopher tortoises have come onto the site since we've moved them all, then they have to be taken care of as well. There's a condition that deals with any wildlife that comes onto the site after we start construction. We can't, still, still aren't allowed to put concrete over them or suffocate gopher tortoises. I think that's all I have. I think everything else we have talked about. If you have any particular questions for myself, my team, Level Up, my clients, DRB, or Steve Henry, who has done our traffic, I would add, we heard a lot about the intersection of State Road 52 and Colony at the Planning Commission.
Hudson and 52?
Fifty-two, fifty-two and Colony, you know, all the way down. I know we're at Hudson.
Oh, yeah, I looked at the map, yeah.
The fact that that intersection doesn't have an intersection, but, and we, staff actually researched that after Planning Commission, and I was sent a copy of it, that the FDOT is in the process of doing improvements to that intersection to make it signalized. So, I think that's a response to people's concerns, that FDOT is actually moving that forward. So, I wanted to let you know that. If you want any more details about that, I'm not the detail person, but I can tell you that DOT is already working on it, knows of that issue, and they're planning on making that a signalized intersection.
I do have one question, because I'm here on Google Maps looking at this property. Does the, is there a Sackelson family, I'm going to guess, or?
I think that's who the, yes, that's the family that we're buying the property from.
Okay, and do they live on this property? No. So, I'm looking at probably, I'm looking at a lot of activity and dumping on this property. There, someone's using this property. This is kind of what happens when certain areas, you know, it becomes someone's four-wheel, someone else's four-wheel drive-in, camp-in area, and I, that could be a problem. The other thing is, I want to say about the bonfires, and coming from families that have bonfires all the time, you're allowed to do that. I mean, we have, we have residents in Trinity and, what's the name of that golf course there in Trinity? It's getting late.
Robert Trent Jones?
That one. What's the name of that golf course? There are people in Fox Hollow who have, you know, the solos or whatever, or homemade bonfires in their backyard. And I know I had a resident who was complaining about it. She had asthma. But fully within that homeowner's right to have a bonfire in their yard. So, don't, if this goes through, don't think that you can't still enjoy your own property. You cannot raise your hand from the audience, but you can still continue to own your, enjoy your property, so.
So, how can we help them with the road issue if it's already, you know?
Well, that's conceptual.
Right. No, I know with, I mean, also that if you're having all that development around there, just what do the roads look like?
Well, I think we have to work that out amongst ourselves. We have this issue in other places, too, that we're using a model from 2002. Is that what you said?
2002 board approval of a route study for Colony Road.
Okay. Well, you know, the road needs to connect. It's an important connector from Hudson to 52. If we don't have these kind of interconnects, then our roads will be at a standstill. So, we must, must complete the grid, but we have to do it thoughtfully and respectfully. And I don't think this is happening anytime soon, but it's not the responsibility of these guys to figure out our-
Right. No, I was just thinking, the lady that was here, if she's still here, like, if somebody could talk to her, you know, about, you know, possibly not going through her living room.
And I think, you cannot, you cannot talk from, out there, I'm so sorry. But it won't, you know, there's a long process and a lot of time before anything happens, and you will be included, everyone will be included in that discussion. There'll be public hearings and things like that, so.
Is there someone that could talk to her right now?
After we're done?
Thank you, Nick.
You can talk, meet her in the back, the county engineer?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, can you put up the slide before with the Sackelson? There you go. That one right there, yeah. So, if you look on the right side of that, that developed there, much more dense, but that thing connects down to Fair Winds, which is a lot further to the south. We get a situation where, and I'm not sure what's right to the side to them, et cetera, but, you know, all these one-acre lots, people are doing all sorts of agricultural, et cetera, and all of a sudden, we're going to squeeze it right in. And the worst part is, we're not even allowing for the road to be connected. Now, if you wanted to show a benefit, so be it, but right now, you're going to take all that extra traffic, and those who ever go up there, if you go up Colony Road, you're going to take a right on Foxfire. You got to come up to another turn, take another right turn, and then you're going to Hudson Avenue. It's not ideal. And I will tell you, I wish that staff had worked with us closer because this development coming in on Palm Wind, had this worked with this one better, they could have made that connection in Colony right through their property. Could have gone right along the edge. But that didn't happen. And that's what we, that's the type of thing we need to change what we're doing. If we're going to come into a rural area like this and have development come in, it's got to work better. Right now, again, just with the dimensions of what that road was supposed to be, and Mrs. Erickson, I looked at your house right there, and I'm watching. How can we design a roadway going right through somebody's house? Why would we do that, especially when we could have gone up a little bit further in the other development and then brought it over from there, when we saw we're making a change on this roadway, where roadway is going to go? So, to me, it's like, these vision roads are tough, we're seeing today. But handling this one here, to me, it's not ready. That connection to Colony Road needs to be done. To take the roadway on Foxfire and just throw more traffic down there? I would rather even see a cul-de-sac or even just a T-section there and just let the people, if they're going to come in there, that they got to go up on Hudson Avenue. That's their only way in and out, unless they connect over to the other neighborhood there. But to bring them down Foxfire and up and around, let them go straight up and over. They don't need any more traffic right there. These are rural roads that are dangerous at night. I mean, you know, people have signs up there. They got reflectors up there. It's not, it's not a great scenario. And to tell a neighbor that has an acre parcel, and he can't build another home on the other acre, but now, we're going to let R4 come in, what are we doing? I mean, I'm glad we're looking at the ADUs. That's great. It's a classic example why we need to do that, but again, you're throwing this high-density in here, and granted, not as high as Palm Wind, but with no connection that's going to go until it's going to fall on us taxpayers again. And I will tell you, just like we found out earlier, we heard earlier today, we don't have the infrastructure in place to make these things come in. So, I don't think this one's ready yet.
I think there is more property that is coming on the market in this area that is, I probably can't speak to it, but there's, I've heard rumors, there's a big piece coming here that's also coming in. They have every right to develop at R3, right? They're coming in at R4.
So, Commissioner Starkey?
Less than R4. I agree. You know what? Some attention needs to be made to these roads to make them safer. And also, I look forward to the day when we fix Hudson. Hudson needs to have some pedestrian safety features on it. And I have said here that I think the bus stops, especially when we're out here where there's no lighting and it's dark, let's get those solar lights from Metro on here and put them up there. They can't be that much, and they're solar. And I don't want to see kids sitting at a rural road in the dark, getting on a school bus. I don't, I don't think we should stop doing connections because a road is substandard. I think we should keep the connections and find a way to fix the road because otherwise, you're going to create a gridlocked traffic nightmare in the county. We won't have enough roads to support, and that is like Planning 101 is interconnectivity. So, I kind of agree with you. That's too bad. Colony swung to the left. But we had that discussion when, I think, when Fair Winds was coming in. Frankly, I wish we hadn't approved that at forty. We should never approve forty-foot lots on that thing. This is sixty-foot. Those houses are very nice. I wish we had more developments like that coming in the county, frankly. But there is some work that needs to be done here to improve safety. And I was trying to find where it says Shady Hills Ranch. Was that what it's called? Shady Ranch? I couldn't find it, but is this Sackelson part of Shady Hills Ranches?
My understanding is it's not.
Okay, so there may be some deed restrictions on some land, and I don't know how that works to change that. So, I could not find it listed here as a community. I saw other neighborhoods, Paradise Acres, Florida Nature's Park, Colony Village. You finding it?
Right there.
So, okay, he found it, but this is, this is not in that area?
Madam Chair?
Right, it's just south of-
Just south of it, okay.
So, when we approve the Palm Wind one, that connection there runs north-south all the way from Hudson Avenue to Fair Winds. Fair Winds goes out to Meadow Oaks.
Yeah, I see it.
Oak comes over to Colony Road. Fairly well-traveled roads.
Is that in?
This one here, you're letting a connection come in that doesn't connect to what's supposed to be a vision road to go a little further. Instead, you've got a very dangerous thing, a very bad way, as far as connectivity goes, to make these people go in, out, and all around, and you're going to add more traffic to it.
I think we need to work on connecting.
I think they should have worked on it before they brought it to us. There was property to the side of Colony Road-
That's not their responsibility with sixty houses to build a vision road.
Fair Winds Drive, Hudson Avenue. They made it work. Why aren't we making these guys make it work?
They have-
They went and put all that running together.
And it's a county standard road, and it's a county road, and it's a county-maintained road. Your code tells us to connect. That's why we've connected. So, to say that we haven't done something, or we did something wrong, or we didn't plan something, your code tells us to connect.
But that's not their responsibility.
Colony should be built all the way.
The sixty-four homes is not going to build Colony Road, but-
We are, we have a large portion of Colony Road, a large right-of-way dedication, a large obligation of what we're going to build of Colony Road through a configuration that you all approved through your route study, when you did Palm Wind. I mean, we have followed everything here, and we're doing large lots, seventy-two hundred square foot lots, nice product, a good, you know. We have done our work, and we did all of our work.
What is the law?
This has not just been put together.
Approving this or not approving it? I'm asking the county attorney for what it is that we have to follow in approving and not approving.
You have, well, you've got a piece of property that is in your Res. Three classification. Anything up to three units to the acre is deemed consistent with your plan, but it doesn't have to be that maximum. They are, they are at 2.67, according to this graphic, which is, which is, which is pushing the-
No, I don't think that's-
No, no, you're looking on this side.
That's actually Palm Wind. That's actually what Palm Wind approved at, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, exactly.
1.8, so they are about half, a little over half of what the-
What they're allowed to build. They're at half of what they're allowed to build, right?
The maximum density for the parcel, not, it's not what they, it's not of right. None of your comprehensive plan categories are of right, but you have a historic, a historic tendency to go to almost the top of the categories. But it has to be compatible with the area. You've set the trend with Palm Wind, frankly.
Oh, we lost it.
And so, you know.
We're taking way too long on these.
Again, this is, you know, you asked for the explanation.
I know, I'm sorry.
So, I guess the advice I'm giving, is there a right to the rezoning? No, but they've come in with a project that's pretty close to your comprehensive, at least from standpoint of future land use, it's below the category that they are in.
And it builds part of the vision road, not all of it, but part of it. Commissioner Oakley, Commissioner Waitman, any comments?
Again, this is the third time we've talked about a vision road rolling through somebody's property. It's very frustrating to me, more frustrating so to the property owner. So, it's almost like setting a preeminent, you know, depending on how this is aligned, then it's setting up the future properties to the south potentially for what that destiny is, and that property owner may not want that.
It could, Commissioner, there is a road there that it can attach to. It doesn't have to be, we don't have to build it as wide as what they're saying, right? So, and I think that, I think there's some property coming in here.
We can't speculate. We have the facts of the day.
But they are not-
We have the facts of the day, at least for me, and this is what I'm basing it on. And the county has said, okay, here's where we're going, plop this road down. And it's, again, it's another situation of a county road that, to no fault of the projects, this is, they're following what the county has laid out, and then it has a negative impact, potentially negative impact, or at least a frustrating impact downstream to neighboring property owners. We've got to get competitive, better communicating where these roads are potentially laid out and send folks a letter or something. At least they know, and it's not surprise. People get a lot of mail, you know. So, that's a piece that's frustrating here.
But Commissioner, this was a route study in 2002. The property around here has changed hands on multiple occasions. So, I'm not sure that even if we had notified everybody in the area that the alignment, that it wouldn't have been sold off by this point.
Where's the, is she here? I think she's lived in this property well before 2002, correct? Yes, ma'am. What year did you buy this property?
It's around eighteen years.
The deed is 2016.
2016.
Well, okay.
All right, listen, they're not building the vision road. That's not happening. They're only going down to their entrance, so no one south, that house is not affected with this project right here. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you look to where that Conde Land Road intersects and ends on this property, if you blow it up on the screen, you could actually see it goes, designed to go right through her house.
I, that is, that is, that is a conceptual route, not an actual route. So, you have to look at that.
I am. I'm looking at Palm Wind right beside it. You tell me where else that road's going to go. You've got no other options right now because-
Why can't it go on the road that's there existing?
There's no, there's no road existing right now.
I'm looking at it right there, right?
It ends at Foxfire. And because our staff, knowing this vision road was there,
Okay, I was one block.
Didn't allow for that road to come in. We could have been moved around then and at that time. Instead, all we did is have them stub in to connect.
Can it go more to the east?
Now, that's going to take a conversation with Palm Wind because you got that little green spot right there. If you could get that, if you could get land to the side of the developments to the side, that's, there's a narrow piece and it extends out a little bit further, it would connect to Colony Road to go forward. But that, I don't think that discussion's been had, and frankly, now that we can see what we got to deal with? I mean, do you really want to tell Mrs. Erickson, we're going to be taking our property one of these days?
County engineer, can you talk about the vision road, please? Sorry.
Do you want me to redraw the line on the fly, or do you want me to just commit to re-looking at it further?
That is conceptual. Is that correct? The exact route?
Well, but-
Nick said that there was a route study, so it's less than conceptual.
Okay, so it's more than that.
Could we revisit the assumptions that were made in the route study? Certainly. Does that put this application in a state of weight and C? Unfortunately, it would because the footprint on their property may also be affected.
And this, and we did the route study in 2002, and this property was purchased in 2016? Is that what you said?
The Erickson property, the deed out was in 2016.
The Erickson property, the deed out was in 2016.
And you approved Palm Wind with no vision road on their property in 2023.
That connects all the way to Fairways.
I'm sorry, Barbara, what'd you say?
I said, you approved Palm Wind in June of 2023, less than two years ago, which cemented this alignment in place, because you didn't put it on their property. So you.
All right, you know, we've got to move one way or another, we've got to do something. So I'm looking to my board for what you want to do here. We can't just stand here and look at each other all day.
And I can tell you that, I mean, we, our whole southeastern corner is going to you guys, so, I mean.
So, Madam Chair, I'm not sure what the board wants to do with this, but I did craft a condition to deal with the cross-section issue. To make it clear that we're not approving that cross-section with the MPD approval, and it'll be approved at site plan approval. I sent this condition to Barbara and the county engineer. I realize she probably hasn't seen it, but I did draft an amendment to condition 23 to address that issue, if you were inclined to approve this.
And I think that's a good compromise. We go back to, you know, a 33-foot road for now. This isn't the 100-foot boulevard, whatever, that's on the cross section.
Right now, it's 124.
They're still going to be required to give 124 feet of right-of-way.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that the design of what it goes in that right-of-way would be deferred to site plan approval and through the county engineer to review that cross-section. So that you're not approving the cross-section that was shown earlier.
That only addresses your concern about bike lanes and multi-vats.
Well, it does a width, too, I mean.
It does take the width.
You can decide on a width.
Narrows the road.
It doesn't change the alignment.
It does within that boundary, right?
Doesn't change what right-of-way we're giving, right? But yes, that's true, because it's the right-of-way we're giving.
It's just changing what could go in the right-of-way. Because you had concerns with the way that was designed, so that's why I tried to draft with that condition. But that only deals with that one issue. I just wanted to make sure that if you approved it, you've made that change, that's all I'm asking.
But if, from what I was hearing, just from the county engineer, if we wait a little bit and discuss this vision road, it might affect that project, right?
You can see that Palm Winds is all the way to our property line. They have homes there. So this alignment was decided when you approved a route study, and then you approved Palm Winds. There, you can see the site plan, that's an approved site plan.
Right, it's hard for me, because I.
There are homes, there are homes there.
Right.
So. That they have the right to do it.
You cannot talk from there. We have a bailiff, and I'm going to tell you again, this is my last time, you cannot talk from the audience.
I didn't do Palm Winds, I mean, we, this property, this is your alignment of the vision road. And it's not like we could say, oh, Palm Winds isn't developed yet, let's put it over on Palm Winds or on their property. You approved Palm Winds, and this is the alignment.
Barbara, your property line is that dark, dark black line going north, south? Is that, is that big green blob a wetland? Is that what's going on there? I mean, can you take Palm Winds straight up, I mean, Colony straight up?
There's a wetland there. But I'm not sure that would solve the.
Yeah, the pinch point is that corner.
It's the south that you're all talking about. But we're giving, I mean, look at our property, our right-of-way, our right-of-way is the southeast corner. So that, so where it comes down to property that we don't own and the county doesn't own is our southeast corner. So that's.
We, we're either approving, or denying, or we're continuing.
Right in that corner is where you have approved Palm Wind, Palm Wind project. That we've had to donate extra right-of-way so you could have connectivity between the vision road and Palm Wind.
Can you go to Pasco Mapper? Can you pull up Pasco Mapper? So this road, okay, can you go to Pasco Mapper for me up there? And then, and this road was, this alignment was done in 2002, is that what you're saying? Could you please go to that corner of Foxfire and Colony and show me what it looked like in 2002? Say 2003. And maybe that.
Yeah, I would, I would say it was approved in 2002 and then reinforced in June of 2023, when you approved Palm Winds.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'm going to say this, Hudson Avenue is a two-lane road. We don't have even sidewalks out there all the way through, right? We're working on putting those things together, though I think Nick has got a plan to do that. And we've done some other developments down the road. So I don't know why I need a full-lane road with all the bells and whistles you've got on here, when probably a two-lane road would help control the density better. I mean, all the way down. So I mean that redo Colony Road all the way down. Probably at the intersections, you put up more turn lanes, whatever, but.
What I would say is that, you know, that's a solution for today, is even if we just, we reserve the right-of-way, but plan on for now a two-lane, much narrower road, much less affecting her, and then one day, maybe she wants to sell. Something, things happen, and if it's needed, we could widen the road then. We don't, I am sure that that road's not going to be four lanes anytime in the near future. I mean, Trinity Boulevard isn't even four lanes yet, so.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Can I clarify something? Barbara has said this, they are not building the road south of their.
Right, stops it.
Their first connection to it. So what the county does within that 124 feet of right-of-way south of that, and how many lanes we build and what alignment we pick, is totally up to us. So we're not setting that today. The only, and they're only building two lanes to their entrance. So this approval does not obligate us to build four lanes south of that, it doesn't obligate us to build in any particular alignment south of that. But it probably does need to connect to existing Colony Road.
Looking at this map here, what year is this? 2001? Well, this was before the road went on the map. Can we see it on 2003, or whatever, how you do it? Four, and can we go to 2006? Okay, can we keep going? Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yep.
David Allen. You know, we're getting late in the.
Yes.
On this particular item, and I've been taking notes here, and I think we've nailed it down to three key, three major issues. One is the cross-section of the road, which I think is a technical issue that Mr. Goldstein had mentioned previously. And I think we can work through that and come up with an alternative section that would meet the needs that we've talked about today and fit that within the right-of-way. That's number one. Number two, I think, though, from what I'm hearing on the vision road, is the specific alignment that we're looking at, and the challenge that we have, quite frankly, right now, is that we are really hyper-focused on this corner piece of property. When you look at the whole of Colony Road, all the way down to where it's supposed to connect, there is going to have to be a lot of additional property acquisitions, right-of-way acquisitions, or any other things like that. So I think that this is a good opportunity for us, the staff, to take a look at that and reevaluate that vision road piece. Then, thirdly, one of the things I heard particularly from the community was the concerns with cut-through traffic on this project. And certainly, the project proponent has met the code requirements, but I think it was Commissioner Mariano who suggested maybe we have a cul-de-sac at the end of that one piece and really force all of the traffic just from this particular project to go up to Hudson and in and out.
Can I suggest that instead of a cul-de-sac, we put an emergency exit, and so that one day, if, when Foxfire gets fixed, people who are trying to get home here don't have to go all the way up and around if there's a perfectly fine road. You're stressing, you're stressing areas to the north, maybe when you don't need to, but wait until Foxfire's improved.
And I think, the point I was going to make is that really would require board action, because it's a change from the Land Development Code.
I would agree, that's why I, it's not emergency access only, because it is a code requirement, it's ultimately your decision. You want it to be a full access per the code, do you want it to be emergency access only? Your decision. That's what I told Planning Commission, that's why they didn't take any action on it, because they're just, they're following your code, but it's ultimately your decision.
I'm good with that. Nope, sorry. Commissioner Mariano, it's your district. We've got.
I'm going to continue it.
Second. If you're going to continue it, you need a date certain?
Don't do it on, don't do it on the.
How much time would need to relook at this roadway?
So, could I ask? We're agreeable to emergency access, I just said that under Foxfire, it's your decision, and if that's what you want to do. What else can my, and we've agreed to a condition that whether you want us to do a two-lane cross-section, a four-lane cross-section, bike lanes, no bike lanes, you can set it. What else are you going to do to my project? The client needs to move forward. We've been working on this for a while, with all of you.
I am comfortable with that.
And, and so, and our density's lower than Palm Winds, so you've already set what's compatible. We're commuting your vision road, you've heard that we're going to give right-of-way, and if you don't want all of it, and you want to use all of it, more green space. So I just don't know what continuance, and maybe you can tell me what a continuance, other than hurting this project and hurting the folks developing this project. Which, by the way, you look at, everybody looks at their renders and says, this is a quality project, these are going to be expensive homes. These are not our lower-end product, these are expensive homes, which will be an actual benefit to property values, I know that's always debatable. But I just don't know what, other than hurting this project, what we would accomplish different than.
My showing deference to the district commissioner, my concern isn't necessarily to the density, to the alignment of the roadway.
That's got nothing to do with their project.
It has, well, they're building the first leg, they're building, the first leg's coming down between them and the county.
That's the only place they can go.
And it's setting precedent, of course, the project to the east, and when this gets built, it's setting precedent to the south. And with the third time we've talked about this today, there's a bigger conversation that needs to be had, I think, between each commissioner and staff. Unfortunately, your project is potentially hemmed up with a 30-day conversation. But for me, it's not necessarily about the density, it's about the roadway traveling south and showing deference to Commissioner Mariano, who seemingly has some more questions that aren't, that aren't answered. If he wants to change his motion, happy to support which way he wants to go. But again, with staff, I'd like to have a commission meeting, folks, with you all about these vision roads, and kind of a better way to go about, or at least giving a, you know, the public a better idea of what's going on, because again, this is a third time today in the conversation.
So March 25th is your next meeting in Newport Ritchie.
And you don't have a full board.
And you don't have a full board, 9th in Dade City, if you're willing to go there, or the 22nd in Newport Ritchie of April.
What would the applicant prefer, March 25th or April 22nd?
Or Dade City.
Both of those may kill the project, so maybe everybody would be happy about that, but that's what I'm hearing, whisper in my ear, that they're getting to the point of their contract that it might kill it. We have done, I can't tell you how frustrating this is, because we have done everything right.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Kill a project with 60-foot lots, way less density than what you did in Palm Winds, something respectable, something good, and accommodating your vision road that you all set. And you set it with Palm Winds in June of 2023, you made the decision where this alignment was going to go, you reinforced it, and to tell these folks. And I don't see what that solution is. I really, you know, I'm doing this a long time, and I can see, like, okay, 30 days, we're going to. There's not, this is the alignment. I mean, there, you, and you have a lot of properties on Colony Road. But I think what you've been told is, what we'll do is work on the width, right? So that you'll get all of our right-of-way, and we'll work with you on the width. That is where you can continue to plan, as opposed to just saying, I don't even know what the conversation is, because you have a route study, you have Palm Winds. We're setting the width of the right-of-way. If you want us to build a two-lane, and then that'll be your precedent, you've got that ability to do that, to tell us what to build within that wide right-of-way. And that's where I would ask you to please move this project along and let that be the discussion. Because you, and you all can talk about that, we've got time before plans are approved, you all can talk about that, and then the board can give the county engineer instructions, saying, I want to see this road built in that 124 feet. But please don't stop us at this point for your decision on what you want built within 124 feet, because we're going to give you the right-of-way. We've done everything right, and you all can just talk at your next meeting or the next meeting after that. What do you want us to build in 124 feet? And you can look at how you want things to be down the line, and you can give that direction with the condition that Mr. Goldstein has drafted to add to this.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think we could probably get this road down as low as, as we saw earlier today, as even as low as 33 feet, except for the intersections up there. Right now, we're paying in mobility fee credits for some of the roadway that's in there right now, which is not a good economic move, because we need all the road built, and we're going to have to pay for that connection as well. So economically, it's not a good move for us. I will tell you, I was disappointed with staff before with Colony Road not connecting up through there, the connections that the other development house is going from Fairway. It makes a good connection where they get two ways to get out to the south. This here is one way, and people are going to go travel down Foxfire, up and over, come back in. It just, the road's not set for it. We need to go look at what we really can do, and there's a piece of property on the side of Colony Road, if you saw, it's like one thin little sliver down, then another thing over. It's unused right now from the development side.
On the east side.
On the east side that maybe could work.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, I think there's, I think you're going to find opportunity on the east side.
So let's go take 30 days and see if we can make it happen. So I'll move to continue March 25th.
I'm going to suggest that you go to Dade City on April 9th.
I do not want to go where the people can't go.
Far, and you've got residents here, too, so.
Okay, well, I'm not here March 25th, so.
That's okay.
I don't want to contingent at all, I'd rather have two weeks to the next Dade City, but, I mean, it's ultimately your decision, but.
Nothing, anything done in two weeks.
Yeah, it's just a matter of the road. Is that, is that a park in Palm Winds, that green space? Just kind of curious what that is. It looks like it's a park and not a, I think, I think there's opportunity to swing this road to the, to the east. I also say you don't have to build that road right now. People's lives change, things come on the market, opportunities happen. Who is saying, Chair?
Right here, just to answer the question, the green space in the Palm Winds plan would be a neighborhood park.
Okay.
Can we do two weeks?
I'm fine with that.
Hopefully, I can hold my stuff together for a project.
Can you try in two weeks?
More facts for your off-site condition.
You have two that are okay. You guys are okay for two weeks?
And do you want to close your public hearing? Mr. Goldstein, do you want?
Yes.
It's an option for that, Mr. Stein-Schneider, close your public hearing, two weeks, that staff can bring you more facts, we can talk more, drill down on how this all fits.
Can I take a motion? Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
You have one.
Oh, we have one? Two, two weeks?
Part of the reason we're in this trouble, frankly, is the, I don't know if the public were noticed about it, but I didn't hear anything about this until just coming forward. I don't know if you guys did public hearings or not, but public meetings with the people, but clearly, there's a lot of new stuff that's coming out that the residents are speaking pretty loud. So I really want to have it right here where the people can come.
So you're going to redo the public hearing?
No, I think he's saying, are you going to, are you good with, well, the board can always reopen the public comment, but.
I don't think we should be closing the public hearing, because now we're going to come back with new information, I think the people should be able to hear it.
But you already have closed the public hearing, you've allowed applicant rebuttal. You can reopen it for the limited purpose of the changes if you wish to.
I like, that's what I like to do.
But what I heard you, what I heard you saying is you wanted it in Newport Ritchie.
Yes. That's where it should be.
Okay, that's a month, then, or more than a month.
Sounds like it's a month, right? It's three, what is the date?
March 25th.
It's a month.
Any emotion?
We have the motion, could you just clarify when.
Motion to continue March twenty-fifth, and we will reopen the public hearing on the things that change in the project.
One-third, or sooner or after?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye reluctantly, all right.
Madam Chair, just one last question.
Yeah.
Is, is the board okay with the emergency access to Foxfire, because we need to draft the condition?
I am.
So, it sounds like that's consent, okay.
Important.
Something like a T, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it won't be open now.
Okay.
Um, okay, I got to, I have to go to the restroom, I can either take a five-minute break, or we can keep moving, and Jack, you can run the meeting.
Let's take five.
Let's, take five, okay.
Take five.
We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter today in the February 12, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you. To be quick, this is the same opt-out resolution for Livocle that we adopted last year. The only change really this year is we actually have more of a surplus in the 80 to 120% range. We actually went up 879 units, as Commissioner Waitman probably predicted. So we have more of a surplus in that range. So we have even more reason to opt out this year. Just as a reminder, it's a public hearing. It does need to be a roll call vote because it needs to be four votes for this one.
Can I vote first?
Second.
You need to, it's a public hearing, so you need to take a public comment.
Does anyone want to speak to this really good idea? Okay, seeing none. I'll take a motion.
I'll make approval or second.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Well, if there's no abstentions, no nays, and there's five of us, do we really?
So I can prove that you had, I had four votes. Thank you.
Let's do it.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Wake.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Stark.
Aye. Okay, P41. I think this is kind of, this is not a contentious thing here. This is a pass through.
We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the Tampa Bay Times, February 9th of this year.
Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco's Office of Management and Budget. There was a Scrivener error on the agenda memorandum for this one. This is not Commission Districts two and four. As the memo states, it is actually Commission District five. We are here for a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, also known as TFRA, application in public hearing. Yeah, yes, please. Okay, so federal tax law allows for the issuance of tax exempt bonds for qualified private activity. IRS regulations requires approval from the county commission as the highest elected governing body with jurisdiction over the area in which the project will occur. A finding the project is in the public interest, a public hearing to gather input from the public, and the approval will allow Creation Foundation, Inc., also known as Dayspring Academy, to borrow at a tax exempt rate. Dayspring Academy is seeking to borrow up to $5 million. The funds will be issued by the Industrial Development Authority, a political subdivision of the state of Arizona, not Pasco County. The purpose of the bonds is to finance the acquisition, construction, expansion, remodeling, renovation, improvement, and equipping of an approximately 26,300 square foot charter school building and ancillary facilities. Dayspring Academy is located in Newport Ritchie and fund capitalized interest and other costs of issuance. So as a reminder, Pasco County will have no obligation with respect to these bonds. The county is not responsible for paying the debt service. There is no cost to the county resulting from the approval of this application, and Dayspring Academy is not borrowing from Pasco County.
It doesn't say what's, I'm just curious what school that, it doesn't specifically say if it's for a specific school or for any of their schools.
It is the previous public health building that you surplus and sold to them. It's paying for that building and for renovation.
Up on Little?
Roll call.
Yeah, Little, okay. I don't, oh, I see. You just didn't read the address. Okay, it's here. Okay, any, this is a public meeting. Anybody want to speak to this item? Anyone online to speak to this?
No, ma'am, not to this issue.
Take a motion.
A little approval. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Just a moment, please. I believe that was forty-one.
That was forty-two.
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 Have to flip my page.
Yes. We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the February 5th, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item P42 is PDE 25 CU 09. This is a conditional use permit in the name of Joan E. Patterson, AnthemNet Incorporated, Verizon Wireless. It's for a 155-foot above-ground level monopine wireless communication facility in an A.G., excuse me, in an AR agricultural residential district in southwest Pasco County on the east side of the terminus of Roland Drive, approximately 600 feet north of Ballow Road. Before I begin the presentation, there's just two updates to the packet that had been submitted to the agenda. The first is, which both were submitted to the clerk's office. The first is a letter from the Federal Aviation Administration extending the no hazard-to-air navigation determination, which expired according to Finding of Fact Number 15B, which expired on February 11th, 2025. The Federal Aviation Administration issued a letter dated February 13, 2025, and noted that the extension, the expiration was extended from February 11 to August 13, 2026. So that's the first attachment. The second attachment is an updated affidavit attesting to providing public notice, which was also submitted to the clerks. So the proposal is a conditional use for a 155-foot above-ground level AGL monopine wireless communication facility, as I noted in the AR agricultural residential district. It has a future land use classification of res three dwelling, residential three dwelling units per gross acre. The applicant proposes a 155-foot wireless communication facility with a five-foot lightning rod as a monopine wireless communication facility, suitable for the colocation of three additional carriers, so that would make it four total, within a 2,500-square-foot fenced compound area as a ground equipment enclosure at the bottom. It's on the east side of the terminus, as I mentioned, of Roland Drive, approximately 600 feet north of Ballow Road. This is the general location in the overall county. It's in the South Market area, south of State Road 54. Here we go again. So State Road 54 is, now you can see it in the upper right corner of the exhibit there. And pink is the subject property. Here it is showing it with the future land use map, right off of Geneva Lake there. This is the aerial of the property in question, so it's heavily wooded land, surrounded by existing development in terms of neighborhood, residential neighborhoods to the north, west, and south. Here is an exhibit illustrating the 1,000-foot buffer around the property and the notice. One thing to note in this aerial image, at the intersection of State Road 54 and Astoria Boulevard, or Black Lake Road, if I could point, use the pointer, it will hopefully not change on me. Yep, it's changing. You'll notice the shadow of a wireless communication facility on the aerial. That is not there today. So you, there used to be a cell tower right on State Road 54. There's not one there today. It was removed. This is the site plan, which illustrates the location of the ground equipment enclosure, the 2,500-square-foot compound, that would basically host the ground equipment plus the tower itself, along with the access route to the ground equipment enclosure. Here's the ground equipment enclosure up close, in terms of what kind of equipment is going to be within the compound and the location of the tower itself, and of course the image of the tower, the 155-foot monopine, which essentially is a monopole dressed as a, as a tree, and the four colocation stations on the, on the facility. This is the photo simulations for wireless communication views. So this is the map key as we'll walk through some of the images. So here's looking south from the north. So as you, I suppose, peer across State Road 54, without the wireless communication facility on the left, and then with the wireless communication facility on the right. So this essentially is kind of the view from Astoria, looking south. This is looking west on State Road 54, with, without the wireless communication on the left, with on the right. This is looking from Ballow Road, without the wireless communication facility on the left, with the wireless communication facility on the right. And you can barely, you can see it just over the trees there. This is looking from Roland Drive. So this is without the facility on the left, and then with the facility on the right. There you can see it a bit more clearly in terms of the appearance of the, of the monopine. And the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department recommends, makes a recommendation of approval with conditions. The Planning Commission recommendation, at the November 16, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the modification to the wireless communication facility's design, designed as a monopole instead of a monopine, resulted in a tie vote with two ayes and two nays, and the school board broke the tie, voting to deny the motion, resulting in recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission. In the event that the Board of County Commissioners agrees with the Planning Commission recommendation of denial, the denial order resolution will be prepared by Planning, Development, and Economic Growth, and the County Attorney's Office, and presented to the Chair for Signature at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Our consultants have reviewed this, and upon review of the application, they recommend approval of the conditional use application, thus the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth recommendation. If there are any questions, I can try to answer.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Just a technical question. In the procedures, we have the school board members participate to deal with school board issues, and that alone, I thought?
Yeah. I'm surprised they didn't vote on that.
They break ties.
They do break ties? Okay.
That's, that's the only reason that.
That's okay. No problem. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes?
They break ties, but they have been voicing their opinions before the vote, and then voting a lot of times.
They only can vote on, on issues that.
They vote on residential, residential density issues.
I used to sit in that. It was the LPA.
Is, is their role on that, on that board. David sits with the Planning Commission.
So they do vote on any density increases that involve residential. They also vote on anything related to school sites or, or access to school sites. And then they also break ties. The reason we have them break ties is because when we reformulated the Planning Commission, we only have six members. So we had to have a mechanism to break ties in the event there was a tie.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to hear from the applicant? If you don't have any?
You need to hear from the applicant on these.
Yeah, I'm just saying if you, if you're ready, if you don't have no more questions for turn. Okay. Just so you know, we had a cell tower hearing, what was it, last year? If you recall, in Starkey Ranch. David and I were on a Zoom call with the applicant, and that cell tower has not been built, but the applicant or the user on this tower has said that that's further than a two-mile radius anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't affect this tower. This tower is still needed, even though we have approval on that one. Okay.
I guess it's good evening now. Mary Solak, 121 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1500, Orlando, Florida. I'm legal counsel for AnthemNet. I have with me here today Tracy Moore, who is the project manager for AnthemNet, David Smith, who is the RF engineer with Verizon Wireless, and Curtis Ochoa, Chova is online. He is our project engineer. And I have Richard Draggers with Calhoun Draggers Associates. You've had a long afternoon. Your staff has done a very thorough evaluation of this application. We meet all of the code requirements. I know there are people here to speak on it. I might suggest that you ask me any questions you have now, and then maybe I'll let you, I'll come back up and address citizen comments. Does that, does that work for you? Do you have any comments or questions for me or any members of our team first?
Go ahead, can I show, please?
I noticed there was a cell tower in this area before.
No, it's gone.
Did I see that before?
It's gone.
It's gone.
It was up on 54.
I know, but there was one there, right?
There was one up on 54. It was a Sprint Nextel Tower. Verizon was not on it. It's gone. It's been decommissioned.
A different tower company.
No, but still, the, the cell tower is not there anymore. It was taken out. Thinking that just.
I understood they took it out, but I was wondering why they didn't, because if there's a need here in this area for a cell tower, why wouldn't they have put one back there?
I, it was a Sprint Nextel Tower, and I think that it was probably a combination of the lease expiring, and then Sprint Nextel in a fairly nationwide program of decommissioning towers due to the mergers.
Okay.
And we require, when a cell tower is not being used anymore, it has to come down.
Okay.
Which I want to talk to someone about, one that needs to be topped off, that's too high. Okay, and I did ask the applicant, it doesn't matter to them if it's a pine or a pole.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct. There was some debate about that at the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And then, again, the Planning Commission only made one motion, and that was to approve it as a monopole and not a monopine.
Yeah.
They never took up the issue of the monopine itself. So we don't care either way.
Okay, let's take public comment, because I think we have some people here for this.
We do. Elizabeth Kelly.
Listen, it's late, so if you want to speak on this and you're signed up, please line up right here, and you'll each get your three minutes.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Elizabeth Kelly, and I live at 1628 Abyss Drive, Odessa, Florida. I was previously sworn in. During the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant put up a map with a big red circle and tried to convince us that it was necessary for them to put a cellphone tower in the circle. Basically, they wanted along State Road 54 between Gunn Highway and the Sun Coast. I want to point out something that was not really mentioned, is that luckily, there's a major highway running through this area. Most of the properties on both the north and the south side of the highway are undeveloped, which means that they could be available for the right price. And that's what this comes down to. We have two huge companies, a million and a billion-dollar company, who are trying to get a good deal. In order to get here, they went into the residential neighborhoods sitting behind the highway and found the one single person who was willing to allow this on her property. But nobody else in the community wants this. There are no neighbors here in support of the applicant. There was nobody at the planning meeting in support either. Now it's up to you, but there's good news. There is a way to make this work. A compromise to appease the good people of Pasco County and still allow the big companies to build their communications tower in the red circle. Very simple. Deny this project and advise these huge companies to procure land along the highway, like where it used to be. They have the ability and the bank accounts to negotiate purchases or leases of land directly on 54. Please do not allow them to disrupt our homes by unnecessarily selling our neighborhoods when there are multiple other places that they can build to achieve their goal. They may claim that nobody else wanted to make a deal with them, but that just means they weren't offering enough money. If they want to be in this area of Pasco County, they should have to pay the cost to build along the highway. This is the ethically right decision. That being said, if you have already decided that a cellphone tower belongs in this neighborhood, then at a minimum, I request the cellphone tower be built as a decorative bell tower. The applicant's proposal of building a monopine tower is clear, a clear indication that a regular tower would be undesirable for everyone, including them, because of its look. And as we heard ample evidence at the Planning Commission meeting, the plastics in the monopine would lead to pollution of the lakes and the well water that the people in this area drink. A bell tower construction would not be a complete eyesore, and it would eliminate the threat of pollution. This was mentioned at the planning meeting as well, but the applicant's legal counsel said that they did not want to build a bell tower because, no surprise here, of the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Heather Crimella.
Heather Crimella, 1718 Lake Polo Drive, and I'm not sure if there's anyone representing that.
Are you in, are you in Pasco County or another county?
We're in Pasco County.
Pasco County, okay.
From the Patterson family, but I know that they suffered a loss, I'm sorry for that. Commissioners, I'm addressing you as a Pasco resident on behalf of my family, Greyhawk at Lake Polo, which is an established neighborhood of over 20 years to the east of the proposed location, which encompasses nearly 240 homes and the surrounding community, many of which have been there far longer than 20 years. I'm asking you to not, to deny AnthemNet's conditional approval and require them to find an appropriately zoned location for the proposed tower. Please don't encroach on this land. While I understand that it's outside of your scope to determine whether these towers present health risks or side effects, I don't think that should invalidate my concern, but what I can ask you is to consider the financial implications on our property, to lose value in such close range to the proposed tower. In 2022, my family began a real estate search in the area. While I understand appraiser may not tell you that your home will appraise lower during to proximity, I know from experience that you'll lose out on potential buyers. While navigating our home search, there were several houses that we never walked into because of location of similar towers. There's a stigma associated, and unfortunately, you can't persuade me to believe that there will not be a monetary sacrifice for our property values. Home buyers don't seek out these as part of their curb appeal. While I can rationalize with the desire for growth and development in the area, the plans should coincide with current restrictions and require AnthemNet, which is a billion-dollar business, to dig into their pockets and seek out a commercial land lease that's fitting zone criteria and build things on that land, in my opinion. I did, was able to, sorry for my nervous energy also, but I was able to, we did a post before the passing of Ms. Patterson, and that petition gained about 181 signatures. We found out about this meeting last week, so we kind of scrambled to get some support, but we were able to gain 81 signatures from the neighborhood. I think there was a bit of confusion, people that signed last time thinking that maybe that was going to work. I don't know with restrictions of statute of limitations. I don't know if that exists with petitions, but so we went ahead and, and gained more of those. So thank you for your time. It's been a long day.
Did you want to turn in the petition?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, take a motion?
Move, receive, and file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, please.
Lindsey DiStefano.
Oh, they're coming up in order of what they signed. How'd they know that?
Sorry, I'm nervous. My name is Lindsey DiStefano. We live at 15027 Wind Whisper Drive in the Greyhawk community. I have been sworn in. I would like to start by saying I'm a licensed physician assistant and a mom to two young boys, ages two and four, and my husband and I own a small business in Pasco County. We recently sold our home, and we were looking for a new home, and we stumbled across this house in Greyhawk in November, and we fell in love with the layout and the community. So we decided to purchase this house. We, had we known that the cell tower was possibly going to be built on this plot of land that is very close to the house, we would not have purchased the house. Upon further research, it is suggested that these towers be built about a third of a mile from houses, and our house, which is in the middle of Greyhawk, is only going to be 0.4 miles from this tower. The houses that are on the outskirts of Greyhawk are going to be much closer. Additionally, there's a lot of houses down the side streets that are not part of Greyhawk, but they are going to be right behind the cell tower. I don't feel comfortable living in this house with that cell tower being so close, especially raising our boys there, because children are vulnerable to EMF exposure due to the more sensitive brain tissue and organs. So that would actually be a deal breaker for us, and we would consider selling our house and moving, to the point where my husband and I actually have EMF blockers on our cellphones and all of our Wi-Fi routers at home, because we take it very seriously. I'm also worried about what the cell tower will do with our property values, because we feel like we did purchase this house at a high price, and we feel like it'll decrease the value. Additionally, RFK Junior is now Secretary of HHS, and part of his plan is to look into EMF exposure and radiation exposure, and the current FCC guidelines were completed in 1996, and we do know that technology is now different than it was in 1996, and all of those guidelines need to be updated. But with that update, it's going to open up everyone's eyes, especially people who aren't aware of EMF exposure and what they could do to you. So that will further drive down the price of our house. My question is why there's a need for a tower in this specific location, especially on a piece of land that's zoned for residential and agriculture use? I did go for a walk in the community on Sunday, and I was listening to Pandora the whole walk, and I was able to get reception the entire time. I also took screenshots throughout different points of my walk, showing that I have adequate cell activity in this community. And then there's also a big cell tower on 54 and Gunn Highway that's very close. So my question is, why can't antenna be added to that location if there's a need for cell service in our area? And I would just love for you guys to please take into consideration our home values, our health and well-being of the community, and please consider looking for another location for the cell tower. Thank you.
Michael, is it Dario?
DeMayo.
DeMayo.
Yep. Mike DeMayo, 14621 Bluestone Lane in Odessa. I'm here to discuss the proposal to put a cell tower in the middle of our neighborhood. This motion was previously denied by a three to two vote by the Planning Commission. Both votes to approve the motion approved to say yes, however, they were not happy in doing so, which they stated during the meeting. Although I'm concerned about the health effects of living under a cell tower, I do understand that you can't consider those factors during this hearing today. A 115-foot monopine tower has up to 10,000 pounds of fake pine needles and branches made of fiberglass and plastic. This is a 155-foot tower, so let's just say the number is closer to 15,000 pounds. That's almost eight tons of fiberglass and plastic hanging from a pole. Fiberglass dries out, it gets brittle, it breaks into tiny pieces. The blazing hot Florida sun, the summer storms, the hurricanes, all those factors are going to accelerate that deterioration process. The location of this tower, though technically not placed in the wetland, does tower over top of the wetland. It's 155 feet high. The fake pine needles, the branches, they're going to deteriorate and shed so much debris into the ecosystem in our waterways below. We live in a very delicate lake system in a rural neighborhood. We're all on well water, and there's a huge concern about the microplastics that these pieces are going to leach into the soil. We cannot have microplastics leaching into the soil and affecting our drinking water. We're on well water, we don't have city water. The drainage in the area is very poor. We have a very high water table due to all the lakes in the area, and it does not drain well. There's no county sewer system. Even the steady rain yesterday completely flooded the road. The road that accesses where the tower is located is unpaved, and frankly, it's an atrocious condition. It's not maintained by the county. It's littered with large potholes and huge swales that you have to drive around. I thought I was going to break an axle driving over here today. There's no access to this location from State Road 54. The only access to the site is winding back through the neighborhoods. There's no fire hydrants. Even the post office got rid of our individual mailboxes. A couple solutions I hope you'll recommend. Number one, change the location of the tower. It doesn't need to be installed in the middle of a residential neighborhood. There are houses right next to the proposed location. These people are going to be living under a cell tower. Number two, change the type of a tower from a monopine tower to the galvanized metal tower, something that won't shed plastics into the environment below. And third, if you're going to allow this proposal to continue, please require an ironclad maintenance plan to clean up after it. We're fine with innovation and progress in the area, but your job as commissioners to make sure it's done responsibly and to protect its residents. I ask you that you please consider alternatives to this proposal, and I'll leave you with a direct quote from Mr. Charles Gray during the Planning Commission meeting in November of '23. He said, quote, "I don't like it when a company comes and says that, well, we don't want to do that because it's going to cost more money. How it affects the neighbors is more important to me than whether it's going to cost more money or not. If it's going to cost more money, then let's find a different location." Thanks.
Okay, next.
We have two others signed up, but they're online, and in addition to those standing.
All right, well, let's take these three, and then we'll go to the ones online. Okay, come on up. Is there, one second, is there anyone else wishing to speak here today? No, you guys are okay. You're in line. Okay, we're going to close the public comment after the gentleman with the hat and the two that are online. Thank you.
My name is Darlene. I live at 14620.
Your last name, Darlene?
Darlene Moore. I live at 14620 Bluestone Lane. I know you don't want to hear about the health.
Were you sworn in?
Were you, did you swear in?
Yes, I was here when I.
Okay, and you can back off the mic. It'll pick you up. Not that, yeah, that's fine.
I know you don't want to hear about the health effects of the headaches that can come from it, and the memory lapses, and how it affects cardiovascular patients and things like that. But there's a reason why they. But there's a reason why they, cell towers, should be so many feet away from schools. And I think it's the same, it should be the same for residential areas, because these children that are in schools are spending more time at home, sleeping there, and being constantly exposed to the radiation. And this tower, cell tower, is going into a residential area, and cell towers should not be built in residential areas. They should be in commercial or industrial areas where people are only there for a short period of time, not there constantly. Besides the children, there's people that are retired and are in their homes all day, all night. So, but I know you don't, that's probably not the point, since you don't care about the health, but I was not even informed about this meeting until I went for a walk, and I saw this sign face down on the ground on the corner of Balo about this meeting. I also didn't know about the partition or the petition, and I'm sure there's a lot of other people who are opposed to this that were not informed and did not know about it. I think you should take that into consideration, too.
Your name and address for the record, please.
P. Christopher Cotroni, C-O-T-R-O-N-E-I. I live at 15241 Wind Whisper Drive in Greyhawk at Lake Polo.
You've been sworn?
I'm sorry, I was sworn in earlier.
Thank you.
And many of the remarks I was going to make have already been made by people that spoke prior to my arrival here at the podium. I was most impressed by the photos that were presented by the petitioner, because it didn't show where this tower is going, because there are 226 homes in Greyhawk, I'm told, approximately two-thirds of them, homes along Azra Drive, Abyss Drive, Mano War. Every time somebody pulls into their driveway, they're going to see that tower looming over their homes and over their backyards. You won't be able to go in your pool without seeing that tower. None of that was shown in the presentation made by the petitioner, and I ask you to take that into consideration, because they made it look like it was in a rural area where no one's around, and the woman who owned the land is now deceased. And I don't know that the property has been sold or not, but it should be amended for the record that it's the estate of Joan Patterson. Furthermore, it is unsightly. I'm a recent arrival in Pasco County as a resident, but I've been visiting the area for 40 years and finally got to retire, but this is not what I want to look at in my front of my home when I step out the front door, and that's what we're facing. I'll let you go home. Thank you. Ask you to decline this.
Thank you. And we have our last speaker in the room, and then we will go to online.
Your name and address for the record, sir.
Walter Schubert, 1829, 1833, Roland Drive. I am the one that's going to live right across the street from this tower.
Been sworn, sir?
Did you take an oath when you, earlier in the meeting? Did you swear to the-
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Please proceed.
I've lived there for 55 years. I've raised my kids there. I grew up there. Why they want to put a tower back in, we consider this a little slice of heaven, what's left. Everybody knows what's going on on 54. Put the tower up off 54 where the other one was. Why do we have to? I'm retiring now, now I got to sit on my porch and look at a friggin' ugly-ass tower? It's crazy. And like the lady said before, there's only access, there's only one way in. It's not like you can come in from 54. It's only one way in there. We're on, I have 390 feet on a private road that they're going down to go to this. I'm not going to allow it. It's a private road, it's private property, it shouldn't be allowed. I don't know what else to say. I did want to mention, too, that Joanie has passed away a year ago. She is not around anymore. Her kids are there scrambling, they don't know what to do. They're all looking for the easy money, that 10 grand a year you get for putting a cellphone tower on your property. I have not, I grew up with Joanie. Joanie was a good person, but her kids don't know what's going on. They're all fighting, they're all scrambling, they don't know what to do. So, I'm just here to vote, no, I don't want it. I grew up there, I don't want to look at it, and I don't want my kids to look at it, nor my grandkids. You know, I just, I've spent my whole life in Pasco County, right there, and now they're going to do this right in front of my, you know, it's crazy. I was, I lived in Odessa when Odessa was nothing but dairies and Mitchell Ranch and Stargie Ranch. My mom took care of the Stargie kids. You know, I've been around this area, and it shouldn't be. I just, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have two folks online. Can we go to them?
The first one is Nick Zumas.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nick Zumas here. I've been sworn.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Am I coming in clear?
Yep, you are now.
1831 Dennison Road in Odessa. I believe the Planning Commission was correct to recommend denial of this project.
Nick, have you been sworn in?
I have.
Okay, great, thank you.
I put a message in the chat of Webex.
Thank you.
We can, we can-
No worries. I think the biggest problem here, well, not the biggest problem, but the sign being down in the road doesn't bode well for the applicant. The first time this project came up, the sign was down in the road as well. Don't want to make any accusations that are false, but I believe that it was the applicant themselves or the property owners that took the sign down. I've had to secure it twice to a stop sign with zip ties. I just, I don't appreciate the appearance of any impropriety there when we're supposed to be having a public open process, you know, for somebody to be messing the sign. Nevertheless, it shouldn't be a PVC tower, as other people have mentioned, you know, that's going to be a problem with pollution in the lake system. This is a protected wetland. Make them put up a regular tower. If they don't want to put up a regular tower, then too bad. You know, I think that this is an issue of carrier prioritization, the need for more towers. AT&amp;T prioritizes their customer service very well across the network. They have multiple different levels of service for their customers. Verizon, and you can Google this, Verizon is the worst when it comes to customer prioritization. They don't have enough tiering. They need to do a better job at it. You know, we're looking down the face of 5G towers, and those things are going to be everywhere, every few hundred feet. Where does it stop? At what point do we say no? You know, this neighborhood has fiber. Hardwired connections are great, I'm talking to you over fiber right now. Cell service in the neighborhood's decent, I understand the need for future expansion, but at some point, this technology, too, will be obsolete. Look at what they're doing with satellites. Somebody mentioned the family, and I spoke to one of the family members this morning, and they are in disarray, and a lot of them that have to sign off on this tower don't want this tower. But what I'm told is that the cellphone tower company now is jamming it down their throats because they're in a contractual, they're locked up contractually, so they have to take the tower or risk being sued for performance. So, I can tell you that this property is supposed to be sold. I don't know when it's supposed to hit the market. Somebody's living there that's not supposed to be living there, but it will be sold, and not only does the neighborhood not want it, a lot of the family members involved don't even want it. So, I appreciate y'all's fortitude in this process. It's been a very long day for you. These are necessary conversations that we're having, so I tip my hat to you, and I give all of you on this board credit for doing what you do and having these necessary conversations. And I would recommend denial of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Curtis Archova?
We have another one, okay.
He's with them.
Oh, he is with the applicant. Okay. Okay, to the applicant and then to the board.
Okay, I need to have some of the documents. Can I have the photo sim first, please? Okay, while he's loading that up. Your code allows towers of either permitted or conditional uses in every single zoning category in your county. There is no per se incompatibility of cell towers with residential properties in the county. Under your code, we're allowed to do that. We have performance criteria that we have to meet, and we've met every single one of them, but we can't just put them in industrial and commercial areas, because that's not where the people are, and that's not where the demand is, and that's not where the need is for them. So, now I'm going to show you, we added a few shots to our photo sim. You have one in your package that has four views. This is the same, the first four views on this one are the same four in your package, but we added four more views. You had a number of people come talk to you from the neighborhood to the southeast, the Greyhawk neighborhood. And let me get-
Some of my fellow commissioners may not know where Greyhawk is, if you want to identify where that is.
Sure. Is this a pointer or is this? The top button is the pointer? Okay. So, let me go back.
That's Greyhawk.
That's Greyhawk. This is Balo Road. So, we add, we added a couple photo sim locations, and I'm going to point out, this one was the photo four. We added the one to the east, which is location number six.
Well, that, I think, okay, that's State Road 54, so here we go.
No, I'm talking about the one on Balo Road, number six, view number six. So, we added this location down on Balo Road directly north of Azra Drive. The tower is not visible. None of those neighbors in that neighborhood to the south will have any visibility of this tower, and we specifically added that view. Now, it's a gated community, we couldn't get in there to get something more internal, but we're just north of, let me go back to the map and show you again where that view is taken. It's right-
Are you saying that is the view from Greyhawk?
That's the view from Balo Road. It's just north of this neighborhood. And there's, this is Azra that, Tracy, maybe you need to come help me with this, I'm very bad. Yeah. So, now the pointer. So, that view is the one I just showed you. There's, the tower's back here. There's no view from here. If there's no view from here, there's no view from here, and we couldn't get in there, but we took this shot right on the, we went further east on Balo Road. And Mr. Zumas that just spoke lives pretty close to that neighborhood, too. He lives on Dennison, and he's about where we, that photo was taken about where Dennison intersects with Balo Road. He won't have any visibility of this tower either. And really, the only impact of a tower is its view. The aesthetic impact is the only impact it has. We've sat here all afternoon and listened to roads and traffic. We don't generate any of that. The only impact is visibility. So, I'm going to go back. We added a few more shots in the photo sim, they're all locations-
Left chair?
Yes.
Go back to the picture you had that you were just referencing.
The, this one?
The one you had right in the middle of a tree. That one?
Yeah, you can't see it.
When you put a big block of wood right in front of something, yeah, you're not going to see it. That's a terrible picture.
Well, I can have Curtis Archova online.
I'm just telling, it's a terrible picture.
You will not see this tower, given the wetlands that are on the Patterson track and the wetland track that is directly to the east. They will not see it. The rest of the photo sim, there are, we added three more shots that we just went in a greater ring around the original locations. I'm going to go back and point them out. And there was no visibility from any of these additional locations, so we added five, six, seven, and eight. So, we added from here, we added here, we added- It went blank. This one. There we go. And I can go through them.
Did you show us five?
Yeah, I'll go to five. Five is from State Road 54 looking, no.
No, it's not-
Five, five is from Geneva Drive, looking southeast. You can't see it.
Go back one slide.
This is the only slide we have that you can see it, and this is taken from Roland.
And on the other side of Roland's, about eight residents that are probably here today or that have spoken that complained to you before.
There's not eight.
Six?
Five or six from that side. Most of them are up on Keystone, Blueke, Bluestone Road. Mr. Schubert, let's put this one up. Can you have, you have an overhead? Mr. Schubert is the closest speaker.
He lives on Roland or Balo?
He lives on the corner of Bluestone and Roland.
Okay.
And let's get this map up. Mr. Zumas lives on Dennison. I have the distance to his house, too. As soon as we get this map up, I can show you. Okay. There it is.
That's the one you had.
Okay. Oh, it's upside down. There, there we go. Okay, here's our tower site, right here. This is Mr. Zumas over on Dennison. Is that to the right? And what does that say? I can't read it. 16?
13.
1360. And then this is Mr. Schubert's house. His house is on the corner here. It's located on an angle, and it orients, it orients this way. The tower is back up behind him, and that distance is, I can't read it from here.
845.
He's 845 feet away. So, they, he's the, he's the closest objector. None of the people that lives directly south here of the Patterson property have complained. They didn't come to the community meeting, they didn't come to the Planning Commission, they aren't here today, we haven't heard from them. And they are the people that are, are the closest. They're within the notice, they would have gotten mailed notice.
They the people that signed the paper?
No, that's people in the neighborhood down here, this new neighborhood down here. This isn't, this is all an older, very, it's very remote, it's a little, it's a neighborhood that's kind of just tucked back in there. You wouldn't know it's there from 54. Mr. Schubert said that these are private roads. This is all public, Polk County right-of-way.
I'm not Polk.
I'm sorry. It's Pasco County right-of-way. There is some of it that is maintained by the county and some of it that's privately maintained, and this is a map I got from your Public Works Department. So, Mr. Schubert doesn't have the ability, I need to turn that around. He doesn't have the ability to block access. Privately maintained is different than privately owned. So, the green right here, no, the green right here is where the county maintenance stops, and the Patterson property is up here, it doesn't show on this map, and what's outlined in red is privately maintained. Okay, let's get the RF engineer up here to talk about, can you load the Verizon package, please? And Mr. Smith's going to come up and talk about why we need this tower, who gets served by it, and why, and address the tower that's up at 54 and Gunn. Okay, David, you want to go through your before and afters? Uh, not really.
Okay.
Oh, say your name and address.
Uh, David Smith, Verizon, seventy-seven oh one East Telkoms Parkway, Tupaterra, Florida.
That was the end of their time, so if the board wants to extend time, you'd need to do it by motion.
Yeah.
Move to extend. Do you want to give them five, five more minutes, Commissioner?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you gotta go quick because Mr. Drager still has to come up here.
Okay, real quick, um, go through.
Just go to your before and after.
Yeah, the before and after. So this is a current map of our, our existing sites. We have four existing sites that are around this facility. So you can see, uh, A in the top left. Um, you got, um, B, uh, a site over there just east of the, uh, expressway over there. And we got a couple on the south side there. The yellow dot is what the proposed location that, that we're here for today. So what you see here is a current coverage map of AWS, um, for what we have, uh, right here. So you can see green is the good reliable coverage for, uh, in building. And you can see how it's surrounding the, uh, four existing sites that we have. And the yellow dot again is the, uh, hysteria site that is, uh, that, um, that we're, uh, here for today. So with the propagation with our current design, you can see how the, the coverage comes in, uh, around the yellow dot. That's the proposed site. So if, um, if we built the site today, this is what it would cover and fill in. So the purpose of this site is twofold, is to increase the, uh, the, uh, coverage. Even though we do have coverage there, the quality of service, uh, we increased that for home internet and things of that, uh, nature. And also the site to the west, uh, by Gun and fifty-four, um, that one right there in front of Lowe's. And the site to the east of the, uh, of the express right there, that flagpole, uh, both of those have high congestion. So this one's going to offload both of those sites and fix both of our problems right there with this one. At the same time, increasing our coverage and our ability to, to improve, uh, quality of service for our home internet as well. So I know we're under a time crunch, so any, any questions?
Any guys? Jack, any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, Rick.
Next up.
Coming up, I want to address the comment about, that Mr. Gray made about cost. We made a decision with the landowner, Ms. Patterson, to do a monopole. We thought we were doing the respectful thing and using a mitigated style of tower in the, for this community. The, the, the pine tree tower is much more expensive to build than a monopole. We went the expensive route first to be, to be respectful to the community. Okay, Rick, qualifications quick and property values.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Richard Dreggers. I've been sworn, seven-two-eight West Smith Street, Orlando, Florida. I am the owner of Calhoun Dreggers and Associates. We're a full-service real estate appraisal firm. I'm a federally certified appraiser. Um, highest level of licenses that, that the federal government and the state of Florida recognize for federally certified appraisers in the United States. Um, I was asked to look at the possible impact to the value of any single-family homes that might be adjacent to a tower similar to this. There have been some studies over the years. There was one in New Zealand. There was one actually in Orlando over my, my part of the world. Where a, an appraiser looked at the big lattice towers like you might see on a big high voltage transmission line or a radio tower with all the guy wires coming down. And so there have been a couple of studies that would suggest those types of towers would have a negative impact. But I was focused on in my study, which I have copied here, uh, looked at the type of tower. Either monopole or one with a flag on it or one with, um, the pine, monopine that they've been called. So I have three different types of studies here. One in Odessa, one in Landalakes, uh, all in this general area. And just real quickly, based on my analysis of looking at the sale prices of homes that were near or had a view of a tower versus a similar home that did not have a, a view or wasn't as quite as close to a tower, similar to the one proposed here, I wasn't able to see, uh, any impact or reduction in value. I also heard someone mention, well, it was a fair point that sometimes the marketing time might be extended because some people won't consider a home. I wasn't able to see that even when I talked to local brokers and real estate agents.
Take a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for Mr. Dreggers?
No, and we, this is not our first cell tower hearing, so we, we have heard that from many different real estate professionals. And you are, so we typically, we have a cell tower ordinance that allows for staff to approve towers without going through these public hearings, but you're having to come to us because of the height of the tower?
Because it's a residential feature land use.
Okay, and what about the height?
No, not because of the height. Because it's a residential feature land use.
Okay.
Which, which you allow.
Tower. You can see it right here in this map, but, um, board members, any questions, any thoughts?
Are we done for the presentation?
Yeah. Uh, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to, real quickly, you, you have language in your code about aesthetic impact. And you, your code says being able to see it does not necessarily equate to adverse visual impact. And you have a whole list of factors that you're supposed to consider
Yeah.
on that. And, um, I guess I'm not going to have time to go through them all, but that tower's visible from one view. You have to consider all the views. It's not lighted. We've used a mitigated design. We, there, if you go through all those factors, there are no, 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 no. We don't meet any of the factors for establishing an aesthetic impact on a tower. And I want to be respectful of your time, but that's, if you go through them, we don't meet them. I mean, this doesn't meet those negative factors.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for me? No, thank you.
And the, um, the park tower is further to the left. It's off the screen when that comes in, correct? It's not even in, it's not even, yeah, it's further west.
Yeah, and I, based on the discussion we had, I don't think it's going to help with service in this
No, it's bypassing the, this really ugly tower at Gun and fifty-four, which should have come down, but that's a story for another day. I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna hide the fact that I wish this was up on the fifty-four, not in a residential neighborhood. It is tucked in the woods. Uh, there's no, there's no, I don't know, it's a toughie for me. No one's ever happy when a cell tower, there's no great location for a cell tower. It's too bad they aren't there before people move in.
Madam Chairman, are you in board deliberation?
Yes.
You can sit down.
Oh.
Okay, I was just going to answer the question about the commercial property at fifty-four that denied us.
So you tried on fifty-four?
We tried, we tried, yes. There's one commercial property owner right at the center of our search area and they said no. It wasn't a matter of money. We found the only piece. And we found a twenty acre piece that allows the size of the parcel and the existing tree cover to absorb the impact of the tower on site. We think we found the best piece in our search area.
Well, someone's always effective when we put one of these, so they're not, they're not my favorite hearings at all. I can tell you that.
I, it's, I understand.
My least favorite. Does anyone else have any thoughts?
No.
Chair. Cell tower votes are always, always tough. And Site C at the bottom looks like there's one in a similar kind of area. Can't zoom in, my iPad's acting funky.
Yeah, it's residential.
I mean, it's, it's, it's very similar. And it's the way that we communicate in this world. And we might be using these today's and ten, fifteen years down the road, we might not need cell towers and they come down. And, you know, we all have Bluetooth in our trucks, in our houses, in our schools. Most cell tower sites are on school sites. And there's no, no easy, easy way around it. Uh, it'd be nice if cell tower companies, whatever the rules are, could predestine where these things go versus waiting till people and they move in and buy a home and neighborhoods are built and then they say, oh, we need to put a cell tower here. It's not, not very proactive. And, um, so I would be, I've, I've supported every cell tower location, good, bad, or ugly, that's, that's come before the board. And I'd be very hypocritical if I didn't say that it's an unfortunate need and I'll be consistent with how I voted since coming on the board in cell towers and it upsets a lot of folks, but people get mad and they call when they can't get internet and phone signal at their house too. It's just tough.
Uh, monopine, monopole.
Um, hearing, listening to folks and if there has to be one, I, I'm hearing a, a monopole if there has to be one.
I know. I would not want to live in these neighborhoods and look at that cell tower. I, I feel like there has to be another piece of property somewhere that they can put that.
Madam Chair, I'd agree with that too.
Mr. Ogley.
Somebody's going to make the motion.
Yeah, well, I can't.
I know, but.
Sure you can.
Chair, chair, don't make the motions. Um, looking at the one down south, that is in a residential area off of Lutes Lake Fern, so I'm looking at it here. It's north of, of Lutes Lake Fern in a residential area.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Um, just to be clear, if you're going to approve a monopole design, if you, if you approve this, I don't think that works with the existing conditions of approval. We, you'd probably have to continue it because, for example, condition two requires them to build in accordance with the elevations that are attached. We don't have any elevations for a monopole design. And I guess with the applicant, unless the applicant has some monopole elevations they brought with them, there's no elevations for you to approve under a monopole design.
But we know what a monopole design is.
I understand that, but we, the reason we include these elevations is it's standard condition because it's showing the maximum height. It's showing other attributes of this pole that they're restricted to. So we don't have anything to attach to conditions showing a monopole design unless the applicant happens to have one in their back pocket.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let me make, let me make this easier. Move to deny. Move to deny.
I'll second that.
I don't, I think it's a moot point. Got two sayings and a motion.
Well, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Nay, three, two, so it dies. Okay. All right, we're done. Uh, we're not, well, we're not, they'll clap it from there. Um, we're not done. We had another, our item, but we are going to move that to the next meeting in Day City. All right, is there anything else to come before the board?
Can we make sure we have that, uh, correct? Was Commissioner Ogley going, uh, yes or no?
No, he seconded, uh, no.
Okay, he did second it and then voted.
You had two nays.
No.
Do you have Commissioner Mariano and Commissioner?
He, the motion was to deny and I voted with his motion.
We both said at the same time, no problem. Yep. Have I signed everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I think we are done. Long one today. Wow.